Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order. Could you please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Full house. So... Mr. Baumgartner, would you please call the roll?
My pleasure, Madam Chair. All right, um... Barnett?
Present.
Tengari?
Here.
M. Smith?
Here.
D. Smith?
Here.
Shadle? Not here. Richardson?
Here.
Murad?
Here.
Kapalansky?
Here.
Anne Bruckler?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a copy of the tonight's agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Murad.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Barnett. Please call the roll.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We have a letter that was received from the first applicant.
Oh, that's right.
That they want to withdraw their application. So I move that we strike item number one.
Oh.
And item number two now becomes number one subsequently down the line.
Okay.
I'll agree to it.
All right. So, the motion is to approve the agenda with the number-one site plan review, SP-08117, removed on request of the applicant. Mr. Baumgartner?
Tengari?
Yes.
M. Smith?
Yes.
D. Smith?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes.
Bruckler?
Yes.
Anne Barnett?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. So, in our packet, we're minutes from the July meeting, from July 25th. Are there any comments on the minutes as they were provided?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I can have your discussion.
Oh. Are there any comments on the minutes?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a couple of comments.
Be kind.
What kind?
Be kind. I'm a novice on this, okay?
I know no other way.
Okay, good.
On page four... And these were very nicely written.
Sure, sure.
The...under item six, "Discussion", the second-to-last paragraph, Kurt Hight, Robina, discussed the quiet nature of permanent standby generators. He may have said they are quite quiet, but it was the quiet nature of the generators. On page six, I was misquoted. Second paragraph, Dean Smith thanked Dave Barnett for his service and thanked him for the continuity provided. The first full paragraph that begins with Dean Smith, page five?
Oh, that's page five, okay.
It's page five. And then the last comment was, I don't recall it being a very long meeting, so I think it ended at 9:08 PM.
Some of them feel that long.
Other than that, they were perfect.
I don't know. It was my first meeting as chair, and it seemed really long. Okay.
I have a...Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Barnett.
Yeah, in the staff commissioner comments, it says Dave Barnett with an E on the end of it. There's no E on the end of my name.
Okay. Okay. Any more comments? Can we take a vote to accept the meeting minutes as amended?
Is there a motion?
Matt, do you?
I think if the person that...
Can you...do you have to amend the motion? I'm still learning.
No, no. He just says as corrected.
I don't think I would support.
You was the support?
I did.
Okay.
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Work out the kinks.
M. Smith?
Yes.
D. Smith?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes.
Bruckler?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
And Tengari?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Baumgartner, communications that we received. I have several emails that have been put into record as well as a memo from interim chief North, his comments. We have another letter that came delivered. And then we have a letter from Giffords Webster on the traffic...the response to the Hubbell-Roth and Clark review of the traffic impact study that are put into record.
In addition to the note from the initial applicants as referenced by Mr. Murad, so yes, that is a comprehensive overview of the correspondence.
Okay. All right. So, now is an opportunity for citizen comments for any item not on the currently amended agenda. If you have comments, we have a full house tonight, so please come to the microphone. If the item is on the agenda, please hold your comments until that item is up for discussion. And in the sake of making sure that everybody has a chance to speak as well as move the meeting along, because it is now, school has started for some of us, we're gonna...we are gonna try limiting citizen comments to three minutes each. And if the topic has been, or if the point has been made previously, we respectively request that you let the next person go and make a new point. Because we've had...we have held the public hearing on this. We do want everybody to have a chance to talk. So we think that that's a fair way to go. So, are there any citizen comments on items not on the agenda? Please state your name and your address when you come to the mic, please.
Kurt Hight, 3525 Robina. If you recall, last month, we had a discussion regarding generators. And before I continue, I want to talk, you know, currently for AC units, if someone decides that the side yard is the best option for their AC unit, that all that is required is a waiver signed by their neighbor. I've not seen or heard any mention of anything that puts limitations on AC units based on the size of the...even the width of the lot, the size of the unit or the width of the lot that is being installed at. I have measured various units and found that many weigh between 24 to 30 inches. So basically, if a resident was having an AC installed in this, it would have to be 30 inches wide. As long as they received a waiver from their neighbor, then they are able to have their AC unit installed without needing to be concerned about whether or not there is a driveway or a five-foot of grass, or it just happens to be grass between the two homes. Because we have seen a few situations where that is, you know, that is the case. During the discussion on standby generators, I made it clear that I felt that if a standby generator is quieter and similar in size to, and from the front view, then there should be no reason it could not just fall under the same requirements for being installed in the side yard as the AC unit. Mr. Dean Smith was pretty confident that current standby generators were much larger than the AC units and would not fit in the side yard and meet set-back, side-setback guidelines in the same way the AC units do. So I brought a few things that I wanted to give out. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, now, the first thing I brought was AC unit data sheet that shows clearance requirements. The second one is a data sheet from Generac that shows the specs including dimensions of standby generators. Last, I included a data sheet for the install of a particular unit that my neighbor had installed. The AC unit data sheet just shows that the clearance requirements can be very similar to those of standby generators. The data sheet from Generac shows that there are plenty of standby generators that fall well within the range of AC units, assuming that they are facing the narrow side towards the street. Seven of the 18 units on the data sheet are below 26. The other four are below...or 29 inches or below. So more than half of them fall within the range of the street and would look not much different than the AC unit. The last sheet I included has the data sheet for the clearance requirements of the particular Generac unit that was installed on the side of a home. I also included a photo. It shows that the units are pretty much in line with each other. From the street, someone just passing by may just assume it's an AC unit from the front. But most importantly, had there been a driveway from the house next door, the photo shows that regardless of if it was a generator or an AC unit, the impact was virtually the same. There were no reason that the standby generators that fall within a certain size limit couldn't fall under the same rules that we currently have for the side yard installation of AC units, which is basically getting a waiver, since we have established that their ratings being quieter than the AC units, even on a 40-foot lot. There are guidelines that need to be met when installing these units, but it really should not be more difficult to get one installed simply because someone has been misinformed based on noise levels or the size of the generator. You know, we're talking about something that's cost prohibitive. We're not gonna have, see, a whole, you know, a whole bunch of people getting these installed, but many times, these people need them. And to try to make it so difficult or even more cost prohibitive for somebody getting installed, when we can make guidelines to ensure that they fall in a similar range as the AC units, I think that would be the preferred method. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Okay. We will move on to the first order of business. The first order of business is site plan review, SP-0617, the Arch Diocese of Detroit for Our Lady of La Cilette, 2599 Harvard, the south side of Harvard, between Kipili and Coolidge, is requesting a site plan approval for a new parking lot in the office district. Are the applicants here and ready? Can you please approach and give us your name?
Mary McCormick, CM Partners Architects.
Hope to talk into the microphones so everyone can hear, please. You can pull the microphone out.
Thanks. Thank you. And last we met, there were questions in reference to the parking in this location. This is actually the 16 spaces per the site plan that you have. The revised site plan would be future parking. That would also be a location for the snow location in the winter, the plowing.
Yeah, we're only talking about the south side of Harvard right now?
Okay. Then we're...forgive me, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Then this would be the location for that here. We also actually adjusted the radius around the corner turn here, which was a concern. Likewise, you can see the arrows that depict all the way out. The...we actually have...the full parking count was 250 spaces complete. The handicap spaces are here. There's also a crosswalk directly across from the parking area to the south to the north in order to meet that sidewalk. Those were primarily the concerns that were brought forward the last time.
Okay, comments. Mr. Barnett?
You said, how many parking spaces are in that south lot?
The south lot? 98.
Okay, thank you. Because that's what we're really talking about right at this moment.
Just talking about the south lot, yes.
I believe in one of the drawings that we had received that there was...there's light poles that are gonna be installed somewhere. And all we got is a revised plan here. In the earlier plan, I believe it called for the light poles to be 20 feet, if I remember correctly.
Right. There was a combined photometric, I think, that was submitted.
Yeah, there was a...I'm curious as to why 20 feet? That seems rather tall, high for this site. They're not very large, and I thought maybe that those could be reduced to 15 feet.
We'll speak to the engineer about that.
Because I don't know the answer to that question. What else did I have? Lane markings and what have you will have to be addressed at some point. I don't know whether you've talked to...heard from any of the... Have you talked to Mr. Terabell about any of this? But the lane markings coming in and out of the parking lots that we should have signage that would say, from the south... I'll call it the southeast parking, that you would make a right turn only to keep the automobiles out of the neighborhood. And likewise, on the south...southwest parking, that there would be no left turns into the...
We did speak with the developer about that.
I think you've talked about that.
Yes.
My other question to you is, where is trash going to be collected for this building?
The trash would be here at the end of this parking lot.
At the end?
Yes.
Oh, in this little...okay. Are you gonna have a dumpster, or what exactly are you gonna do? Are they gonna...
We would have...
Because usually, we require, you know, a trash...
We would have a small dumpster enclosure in that location.
Yep, we'll need a dumpster enclosure in there. My only other question to you at this stage of the game is, where do you stand with the stormwater and retention and distribution of water from the site?
We communicated with Hubbell-Roth and Clark, consultants for the city, and we know that we would be able to have a feasible solution for that. And we're still working on that with them.
So we haven't seen that yet?
Not yet, no.
How close is that to being done?
Well, we're looking at full engineering in order to do this.
It hasn't even started yet.
We're in the process.
That's all I got.
Madam Chair, as requested the previous meeting, we did request our city engineer to attend the meeting. Mr. Roland Alex is there, who can answer any questions that the commissioners may have as to what the requirements for this property would be. They would work with us on site plan review for any engineering, and I can speak to those requirements if there are questions from the commission.
Does anybody have any questions for the engineer? Mr. Richardson?
I guess my question's a general one. Mr. Alex, do you anticipate any unusual problems in meeting county and state's stormwater standards at this site?
We do not anticipate any out-of-the-ordinary problems, no. We would be requiring them to follow the Oakland County Water Commissioner's standards of retaining a 100-year storm with a proper outflow rate to the existing sewer system within the city.
Are you gonna use a retention basin to do that?
Underground retention basin, yep.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Smith?
I liked it better when I got to go before Mr. Barnett, because he took everything I was gonna talk about. Has the traffic patterns...has that been approved by Public Safety? The traffic patterns? We talked about that last time you were here, revising the striping and the directions or whatever, the radiuses. Has that all been approved by Public Safety?
Yes.
We talked about stormwater retention. Now, I only counted 93 spots. Are you including the five spaces in the alley to get to 98?
Yes.
Okay. Should that alley remain open all the time for, you know, life safety or...?
Well, the five spaces in the alley actually are... There's three in the garage, and then there's two over here. But there's an actual path...there's a ring road pass-through that goes through. You can see the new concrete in the location.
I see the new, yeah, the new ring road, yeah. So, okay, you're counting the...
There's two spaces at the end, right, at that end.
Two parallel spaces.
Okay. I just wanted to know where they were located. And what about landscaping? Not a lot of opportunity for landscaping here, but there is... There is a little bit of space between the south wall and the parking spaces. Are you anticipating adding landscaping along there?
No, actually, I think what we had committed to at the last meeting was the mulch product.
Okay. Do we know what that mulch product is yet?
Not specifically, no.
Now, okay, and we talked about the dumpster location. What else might I have? The other...I guess that's it. And I know there is overall site photometrics on the other...on the other... It's part of the other package here. Just a suggestion, wouldn't it be better to move...oh, that's the other site, never mind.
One site at a time.
One site at a time. I guess that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Richardson?
For the architect, I see a crosswalk located to the west... toward the western boundary of the parking lot. It makes sense to have another crosswalk closer to the church building. I would think you'd get some foot traffic on that side as well.
They would have to cross through the angled parking in this location? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm thinking from the back, maybe, to the alley, up the alley. Is that...or do you think that that'll be mostly empty during services?
I think the natural inclination would be the parking would occur here, and they would cross and then walk directly across to the church.
Well, I'd give it some thought. I mean, sometimes people don't cross right there. They make advantage of other crossings. And I'm concerned with the safety of heavy pedestrian traffic here. And I think you should work, maybe consolidate Public Safety a little further to make sure that your crosswalk arrangements are sufficient for their approval.
We'll do that.
Mr. Smith has one more comment he'd like to make.
Okay, I don't want to open a can of worms here, but I think with the city engineer, we're gonna talk about this tonight. There's been some discussions regarding drainage or lack thereof from the property south of the Harvard Commons. On this particular property, and that's a fence. Now, maybe the grade's up, maybe it isn't. We haven't gotten there yet. We're hoping to find out what the heck's going on. In this particular situation, we're building a six-foot-high wall, totally blocking any drainage that may or may not be draining to the north. Has there been any discussion or any provisions regarding what may happen there with existing drainage plane?
That would all be encumbered in the engineering.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr...Mr. Chairman, I get you.
Thank you. That's okay. Any other comments?
Regarding that comprehensive photometric plan that shows all the sites, it looks like your light levels over the property line, the rear property line on this site are in excess of what we permit in our ordinance. And I just wondered if you had undertaken to have this photometric plan revised or looked at the mounting heights that are these...have you done anything on that yet?
We'll go back to the engineer.
The numbers are kinda crammed together, so it can be a little hard to read. But some of these levels are quite high over the property line, so that's something... Yeah, yeah. So, I'd just like to make sure that that gets looked at.
Are there any other comments? I'd like to make one comment, and I do echo Mr. Richardson's comments about, you know, just checking with Public Safety. But we do have a...there is a similar situation across Woodward at Shrine, where the parking...and it goes across a far busier road. So we know it's possible to be safe, and we just hope that, you know, wherever you place the crosswalk, it's, you know, it's in concert with the city recommendations and Public Safety, so... Okay, to that end, I think what we'll do is, because we're taking these one by one, we will take citizen comments now. And as I requested, if we can, you know, limit comments to about 3 minutes per person, and if the point has been made, let's keep moving forward. So as you approach the microphone, please state your name and your address. We'll have an opportunity on each item, agenda item tonight, to make comments.
Kurt Hight, 3525 Robina. Now, I didn't see a whole lot of detail when I saw the plan that I downloaded online. I just was curious, at the back of this lot, this is the one that's on the south side of the...
This is the south side of Harvard.
Just as it equates to when they said I was talking about doing parking, I remember they talked about doing a wall, and then they had to do landscaping, like some kind of a...an area like 10-foot or whatever of landscape between the wall and the actual parking to kinda give an additional buffer zone. At the back of this lot, where I see the row of cars, is it just a wall? And then on the other side of the wall, is the garages? Or are they required to have any kind of a buffer zone on that as well? Because I just think that, you know, all new lots going forward should be created equal. If one area is required to have a buffer zone, I think that this should have a buffer zone as well, you know, rather than having cars parked right up to the property line.
Thank you. Are there any other citizen comments on this?
My name is Jay Sanders. My address is 1364 Dorothea. And I just had some concerns about the level of detail that we do not still currently have as it relates to the engineering. I'm specifically concerned about the drainage. I don't know how many people's basements were flooded in 2014, but drainage and sewage is a major issue. And I believe that if the levels on the property are high and exceed the code, then we need to understand why and how it benefits us to relax that standard. And I'm not sure I understand that, why and how we would be willing to go outside of the code. So those are my questions and concerns. I'm just not sure that we have enough information to move forward. And I would love to see more, specifically as it relates to drainage, engineering, public safety, and exceeding our current code. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Doesn't look like there's any more comments. What is the desire of the commission?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Smith?
When I look at this particular item, the three things that come out are ensuring that any drainage or the water retention meets the Oakland County Water Commission's standards. That's something that is better handled by the people that actually do that for a living than us. The light posts, 20 feet high. When I look at the photometrics, it's almost like they forgot there was gonna be a six-foot wall there. But again, a photometric should be rerun and made certain that we're not going to be in violation of standards. Again, that's something that can be handled by the City Building Department. The last item was the Public Safety input on the sidewalks. That's something that we should always consider. Quite often on Sunday mornings, I'm on 12-mile between Shrine and its parking lot, and I will make an observation that many of the parishioners... A crosswalk is just a suggestion. They just go wherever they want to. On Harvard, you've got lower speeds, but still, you've gotta give people a plan, a pattern that they can follow. So I'd like to have Public Safety review the location of the crosswalk or walks. And pending their approval, this parking lot would be good to go. Those would be three conditions I would put on a motion approving this item.
So are you making a motion?
Making a motion?
I could. I have. Do you want me to do it properly?
I think for Mr. Baumgartner's benefit, it would be...
The new guy.
The new guy's benefit. It would be good if you did that.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve SP-0617 with the following conditions. First condition, that the stormwater retention will be fully compliant with the Oakland County Water Commission. I think it's 100-year storm standards. Second condition is that the height of the light posts be reviewed and with the intention of adjusting them to maybe 12 to 15 feet. And then a photometric study that considers a six-foot wall also be submitted and ensure that we meet city code. And that can be handled by administration. Item three is that the Public Safety... Item three is that the public safety has input and approval on the crosswalk or crosswalks that would be painted onto Harvard Road.
Is there a second for the motion?
Support.
Mr. Richardson supports. Is there discussion, further discussion?
Yeah.
Madam Chair? I think also to that motion, we need to ask for a dumpster location.
And details.
And details, yeah.
In particular, I'm not seeing where that goes if you're going to keep the path all the way around the building. I'm not, I don't understand where the dumpster enclosure goes.
And again, is that something that the City Building Department can manage?
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely. Mr. Burnett?
There was a memo that came from Derek Schuler to Amy back in June 18th, 2017, that addressed most of the stormwater and existing proposed stormwater infrastructure, existing topography for the plan, turning radiuses. I don't know whether those have been done or not. And the stormwater service, I'll send this over to Mr. Baumgarten, and maybe we should include that into the, that information so that it gets back to the applicant.
Would that change the now four conditions?
No.
No.
It just gives you a little more detail.
Mr. Tengary?
This is not specifically pertaining to the motion, but it kind of pertains to the whole discussion. While I was watching this presentation, I was also looking at the screen there that didn't have this plan on it, and I'd like us to consider in the future, perhaps even amending our list of site plan submission requirements to include a PDF of the plans so that we can project the PDF of the plans and people in the audience can actually see it. Because we can see it on the board, and we got it right in front of us, but no one else in the room can see it. So I think that it's probably, it's one line added to the ordinance that, and all these things are done on a computer anyway, so it wouldn't be any extra work for the applicants, so.
Okey-dokey.
Just a thought.
Thank you. Back to the motion at hand. Any other comments?
Just, you know, again, Mr. Burnett just brought up the turning radius. I have major concerns about that, and I think somebody brought up about landscaping, that, you know, because you're taking an area that is almost 100% grass, and I think there's a garden back there and some different things, and paving it over, and we're just taking and creating this huge parking lot with no landscaping. And I know they're trying to squeeze in as many spaces as they can, but I'd like to see more landscaping on this site, so. And I still have concerns about the whole layout and getting fire trucks in and out of there if needed, so. And again, drainage, especially along the back property line, the south property line.
Any other comments?
Just, well, I guess at this point, on this particular item, I'll note that it's a site plan review, and we're looking at just a site plan. It's not a special land use. There's not a lot of discretion if they meet the requirements of the ordinance. They don't quite meet the requirements of the ordinance at this point. If they complied with the conditions in Mr. Dean Smith's motion to approve, they would meet the code requirements. So I would also love to see more landscaping here, but that might be a problem with our code as much as it is with the proposal itself.
Okay, do we need to amend the motion to include the dumpster detail, or did you capture that adequately, Mr. Baumgarten?
I believe I've captured it adequately.
Okay, so, would you like to read the motion, and we'll call a vote?
Okay. Dean Smith moved to approve the existing, the presented site plan with the following conditions: compliance with the Oakland County Stormwater Retention Standards, noting the engineer's discussion on the standards, the 100-year storm. Review of the light posts by the Building Department to rerun the photometric numbers, noting that there's a six-foot wall in place, and also running them with 12- to 15-foot light poles. Have a public safety review of the pedestrian crossings and note their approval before moving forward. And then also call out specific dumpster locations and the subsequent required enclosures on the site plan before approvals are noted by Building Department, so. And then I also noted that the standards set forth in the letter from Mr. Schuler dated June 16th, 2017 should also be considered as well.
Can we call a vote?
I sure can. That's my job. Okay. Tengary?
Yes.
M. Smith?
Yes.
Dean Smith?
Yes.
Shadle? Not here? Okay. Richardson?
Yes.
You're Ed?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
And Buckler?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
All right, motion pass.
Okay, so we move to item number two, special land use, SU 0217, the Arch Diocese of Detroit of Our Lady, for Our Lady of La Salle, 2600 Harvard, the north side of Harvard, between Kipling and Poulidge, tax ID 2518431018 and 019, the west 84 feet of Lot 63, and the east 42 feet of Lot 62, excluding the north 93 feet of the Denler Acres subdivision, is requesting special use approval for a parking lot for a place of worship in the R-1D district. Is the applicant ready?
Yes.
Okay, so. Please present changes since our last meeting.
The adjustments from the last meeting, we identified these 16 spaces as future parking as well. We show the landscaping vegetation along the westerly border, as well as a four-foot masonry fence behind. There was discussion last time in reference to headlights possibly affecting the neighboring residential parcels here. We also spoke in reference to the turn here at Harvard into the lot, more specifically providing some signage as well. We also spoke to the opening into the garage for this area right here. I believe that captured all the questions from the last meeting.
Okay, comments from the commission? Mr. Dean Smith?
One thing that will come up if we get to the La Salle proposal in tonight's meeting is training potential residents of the apartments to use Harvard rather than Oxford. And one of the things that came up, and I apologize for not picking up on it earlier, is the way that these aisles are proposed to be striped is exactly opposite of the way that I would want to have them to encourage vehicles to leave the proposed parking lot for the apartment building and come out onto Harvard. This is something I should have picked up a month ago, but it just, it dawned me, I ride a bicycle or walk, and I don't pay attention to the way cars go, and looking at this, it's, if the La Salle apartment proposal goes through the, I forget what you call it.
The Berkeley.
The Berkeley. If that was to go through, one of the key things of that would be to train the residents that would live there to use Harvard as opposed to any of the side streets. And when I look at the striping on the parking lot here, the area closest to the church is striped for ingress rather than egress. And my concern, and I have no facts to back it up, is that people leaving tend to be more in a hurry than people coming home, and so the idea would be to make it convenient for them to, most convenient for them to get out and use Harvard as opposed to any other exit from that site. Am I making any sense?
Yes, you are. If I might speak to that for a moment, the lower portion of this parking lot here is dedicated parking for this existing parish building, okay? So you're speaking to the upper part of the lot, okay? And so the center row, actually, would speak to an egress out on Harvard. It's the angled parking of that first, the first row here that you're concerned about? Okay.
So, and, Mr. Smith, I'd like to comment on that. It's, while we know that there is a proposed planned unit development to the north, we are only talking right now about the special land use here, and we have to keep focused on that because...
Oh, I understand. I just wanted to get that out fast.
I appreciate that it's out there, but we really need to focus on this and it's in the little vacuum that it lives in and that it's proposed in, and we'll deal with that in another forum, but we have to just focus on this one item.
Thank you for correcting my...
No, I appreciate the vision, but, do we have any other comments?
Well, just along those lines, we're not approving the striping.
Yeah.
Or denying the striping today, right?
Right, no, no.
Not at this point.
Not at this point. Looking at special land use.
Correct.
This is a site plan review.
And sometimes special land use has come before us without even a park, a plan yet.
Absolutely. I do have one comment as to the special land use.
Okay.
And it just, my observation is that to create the special land use, it's, there are no single-family homes being removed.
Correct.
This is right now open land.
Correct.
That would be reclassed into parking.
Yes, correct. Other comments?
I have a dumb question.
There are no dumb questions, Mr. Smith?
Oh, you might, you might change your mind sometimes. The special land use that we're looking at, requesting a last line, requesting a special land use for a parking lot for a place of worship in the R-1D district, and the key word is there, for place of worship, worship. Aren't these spaces actually going to, should it all be approved, the Berkeley, the apartment building? I don't know if that's a legal issue. I'm just bringing that up.
There is no approval of a planned unit development.
I understand that.
At this time, the Arch Diocese has requested a special land use, and yes, I do understand that there is a domino effect here, but this is the process by which we have to judge this request on its merits because we don't know what the future holds.
What happens, speaking of future, we grant this special land use. What happens if, and we haven't been there yet, the Berkeley does not go through? This land use stays.
For, is there a time limit?
There'd be, there'd need to be acted upon within a year.
Acted upon within a year. Okay, thank you.
At which time, they will have to get a site plan approved, which will have all of the details of the striping and curbing and stormwater and all of that, but...
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Well, I'll note that the site plan is actually on our agenda.
The site plan is not on our agenda.
Isn't that what this next thing is?
Yep.
Yeah, it is.
Well, sorry. Let me restate myself. The site plan is not part of this discussion at the moment. This is merely the special land use.
A lot of my comments really speak to the site plan.
So would you like to hold them until that point?
It's hard to separate them in my head, really, honestly. I suppose I can hold them until that point.
Madam Chair? So currently, the way this site sits, half of it is already being used as parking, correct?
Yes.
And half of it is still grass and playground and such, so. So the question I have maybe for, for Mr. Baumgarten is, is that one half of the lot already given special land use as a parking in an R-1D district?
Our records did not indicate any special permissions offered for the, for the parking portion on that parcel. To be fully used, to have to be the principal use on both the parcels that we're talking about is why the special land use is required, but as of current, there is no existing use in sight. I don't know if it has not crossed some thresholds to where it is not more than halfway, therefore it cannot be considered a principal land use, or before it can be considered the principal use, but I can tell you that our records don't indicate that this type of permission's been offered in the past.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Kapalansky?
So if we're just looking at just the use, the potential expansion of a religious use onto this R-1D area, I don't see, just looking at the use, I don't see any, any issues with it. It seems to confirm, conform to the standards of the special land use, and I'd make a motion to approve the special land use permit.
Public discussion?
We'll have discussion. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, we'll have discussion, we'll take citizens' comments. I can do them in either direction, I'm understanding. Okay, so there's a motion on the table, we'll have discussion, and then we'll have citizens' comments on this. Is there a discussion from the commission members?
What you're doing is recommending to City Council for approval.
Yep, just the special land use.
Yes. Mr. Richardson, do you have a comment?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Any other comments from the commissioners?
I do. I have a question, actually, again, for Mr. Baumgarten. If in the future this property is sold, does the special land use go with it?
No. I believe it travel, I believe it stays stationary to the parcel.
Yes.
That's, I don't know that the use, if the use changes, it would be retracted. I would have to confirm that with the city's...
I'm just wondering if the ownership changes, is it retracted?
Variances, that's not the case. I would need to look into this additionally to find out. I don't believe so, but I can confirm that with our legal team.
I don't know, I know, we always ask this question.
It does.
It does?
We, I...
I'm hurriedly lurking, working through the ordinance.
I think it does, but I'm not the commission's attorney.
I'm not the commission's attorney either.
Yes, yes. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, we have discussion, we will take citizen comments at this time. Go ahead, Mr. Burnett.
I'm sorry, I'm hurriedly reading through here. I did note that in the ordinance, it does say that should a special use cease to operate for a period of six months, the special land use shall expire. So if there's a changeover there, there would be a different, it would not continue.
Okay.
Okay. So we will take citizens' comments on the request for special land use only with respect to this parcel.
Okay, he brought up a good point.
Your name and your address every time.
Kurt, 3525, Robina, sorry. He said if the special land use stops being, you know, enacted or used or whatever, and you're approving it for a place of worship to extend their parking, so if they turn around and give away all their parking for a shared parking agreement, and now it becomes apartment parking, does that mean that the place of worship is no longer using it for worship parking, and therefore would that make the special land use expire?
I think I have the answer for this. Because it's parking, if...
But it was parking for a specific reason.
Yes, I understand that. That's part of why I asked the question, but I think because it's, the use is still going to be parking, but it has to be used within six months, so it's a gray area and...
Okay, so let's say the church closed down, and let's say residents were parking there because they needed extra parking, would that still count as being used as parking?
Well...
Even if the business wasn't there?
Let the attorney speak to it.
I don't want to get into that.
The non-official opinion of this attorney.
I don't really want to get into a dialogue.
No, there is, there is a reciprocal easement agreement pending, and the way I read it, it's joint use between the apartment, the apartment complex, whatever that's called, I can't remember the name.
Berkeley.
The Berkeley, thank you. Why can't I remember that? The Berkeley and the church, they can each use that particular area. The Berkeley and the church, they, they can each use that particular area to the best of my understanding.
If I read the proposed joint use or the easement.
Yes.
Property's owned by the church.
It is, yes.
Yes.
And the, the Berkeley, if approved, would have permission, they would have a permanent easement onto it, but they would not own that property.
Yes, they would have an easement, but it would be non-exclusive. So the church can use that lot as well.
Oh, yes, but it's a perpetual easement.
So the, the issue about for church purposes, I think is rather a side issue.
Yes, understood. Are there any other citizens' comments? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Mr. Baumgarten, would you please reread the motion?
The motion would be to recommend approval to city council, the proposed special land use with the Archdiocese of Detroit, Our Lady of La Salle. As noted here, for the tax IDs as noted, for the expansion of a religious use onto an R1D district.
Parking onto an R1D district.
Right, parking into an R1D district.
All right. Would you please call the roll?
I will. Let's see, D. Smith?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Tengari?
Yes.
M. Smith?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right. We will move on to item number three, site plan review, SP 0717. The Archdiocese of Detroit, for Our Lady of La Salle, 2600 Harvard, north side of Harvard, between Kipling and Coolidge, is requesting site plan approval for a new parking lot in the R1D district. Are the applicants ready?
Yes.
Okay.
When last we met, we spoke about the egress into the church here, the cut-in. There were some adjustments to that cut-in. We have the angled parking here and we have the access to this. And we spoke to the other items.
Okay. Okay, so this is how this is going to progress. We're going to take comments and questions from council. We are going to take citizens' comments. We are going to see if there's a motion, if anyone cares to make a motion, and then we will have discussion and vote. So, questions for the applicant from the commission. Who would like to go first? Mr. Barnett?
I'll go first. The same comments sort of apply to what I made earlier on. The issue, and we talked about this, where trash was going to go. And I'm not, I haven't seen that on here at this point.
There's a location right here where there's an existing dumpster. It's not identified on the site plan.
So there is one there now.
But there is one there now, yes.
Where is, where is that? I didn't see it.
It's right here. Yeah, it's not on the site plan.
Is it going to remain there?
It's not noted. It will remain there.
Is that dumpster screened according to our ordinance?
It is.
Following the, there's, much of this parking lot is existing as we talk. Are we going to tear this all up and redo this, or what's the status of this?
We will be rebuilding the parking lot.
So we're going to rebuild the parking lot?
Yes.
So the memorandum that I gave Mr. Baumgarten also references this site, so that'll... And that deals with all the stormwater and all the stuff that we have to do for Oakland County. So he has, so that goes with that too.
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's all I have at the moment. Oh, yes, I have one other thing. The landscaping. You show the landscaping here. Are you providing that landscaping, or is that going to come out of the planned unit development landscaping? Because I, in their drawings that I'm going to look at later, they don't show it. There, so I'm curious. Are you doing landscaping?
We would be doing some landscaping, yes.
So you're going to follow suit to what they're doing?
That's correct.
Okay. And the lighting, the site lighting?
Correct. All the details, the details were married for both the upper and lower.
That's all I got.
Okay. Mr. Dean Smith?
Just one comment. Whoever would be the maker of the motion, one of the, I'm not sure it's an issue, but one of my concerns is that the grading, that this, whatever parking lot is done at this site is compatible with the, any development that would be done to the north. And I would, that's actually an important consideration.
I, I would suggest that any development to the north has to conform with an approved site plan or if that's the case in this matter, that that's their issue as, when the time comes. Right now, we are voting on this site plan review and its merits for the Archdiocese. Yes, I know there's something in the future, but right now, let's...
This site plan review would drive anything to the north?
This site plan review, first come, first served, Mr. Smith. So, let's, all right. That's all I can, we have to judge it on its merits.
Oh, understood. Again, thank you for your direction.
I can't, we can't put conditions on some unknown nebulous thing in the future. Any other comments? Mr. Tengari?
I'm just going to note that I have a general aversion to approving anything that says future on a plan. I would prefer that if we do confer approval on this plan, that one of the conditions of approval will be that the future spaces be removed from the plan. I just don't want it to seem like we've conveyed approval for something that we actually haven't, which is those 16 spaces. I can't really escape Dean Smith's point earlier about the orientation of these drive lanes. Just given that we all do know what, what else is coming for our review. And that kind of, I don't know, that gives me some questions about whether or not I want to approve the site plan tonight because I don't know if this is the optimal layout of the actual striping of the spaces. I understand that we're looking at this in relative isolation, but it's still, I don't know, it still just makes me a little queasy not thinking about the reason that this whole project is in motion in the first place.
Madam Chair?
Can I come back to you?
You can.
All right. There might be some comments on this end of the table and I, Mr. Murad?
I'm, to Commissioner Tengari's comment about the striping is we could in our motion state that the lot has to be striped to...
Optimize, minimize.
Optimize egress from the site. My other thought is to improve egress with the striping we have now. If it would have made more sense to put the drive in line with that egress from, yeah, the second lane of, you know, you got the first lane heading north, the second lane's heading south.
There was discussion in reference to that location having to do with the development on the south side.
Yeah, I understand that. It's almost going to be in line with it.
Okay.
So, in, even if you took it all the way to the far west, it again would be in line. So I think Commissioner Smith's earlier comments and Mr. Tengari's are, you know, if we flip this, it might improve where you could put the egress.
Okay.
And maybe even then the egress comes all the way to the lane right along behind the, the, I think that's going to be the offices.
Okay. Here.
Because then you could put that egress right there. Complicates a little bit for the crosswalk from the plan we just approved, but... And, let's see, what else did I have? And I agree also with Mr. Tengari about the future. I'd like to see that removed from the plan. Because I think that should be something that if this is built and that is going to be done in the future, we take that as a separate application.
Other comments? Mr. or Ms. Kapalansky?
Thank you. I want to go back to the stormwater for a moment. So you said that the, the whole parking area will be redone, correct?
Correct.
So the portion that, that you're redoing, are you adding any stormwater detention for that? What's the plan for that?
Yeah, that would be part of...
Be 100% detained at whatever the requirements are for the entire parking area?
Correct.
So that would be an improvement over the existing?
Much more so.
Okay, that's all I wanted. Thank you. Mr. Smart and Smith?
Um, couple of things. Does the geometry of this work? I don't see a string of dimensions across here. I'd just like to know that you are 100% sure that the geometry of the site works. You got a lot of slack on the west side, so it's not a big issue. But I just, whenever I see angled parking in my many decades of experience, people tend to ignore what the dimensions really are. And there have been issues in the past where, where it hasn't worked. Now, that being said, I mentioned there's a lot of slack of landscaping on the west side. So I don't see it a problem. I just, just wondering. Another item, would it make sense to move some of these barrier-free spaces to Harvard closer to the church entry? Just a thought. They're all parked, you know, they're all piled up along, you know, along the west side of the structures there.
You mean in the angled areas down here?
No, the dumpsters come back in here.
Well, we do have, we do have several over here, right next to the door.
Several.
There's one, there's one along the, close to the entrance to the church.
I just, I'm just asking a question because that's a long way to go in the snow with a person with some issues.
Yeah. We could adjust that and create the angled parking. It just seems safer pulled into the lot.
Oh, it absolutely does, but just, just a thought.
I thought you was indicating they were going to...
Now, why, let me ask you a question. The masonry screen wall, why is it four foot here and six foot on the other south end? Should this also be six foot?
The, the ordinance requirement for this location required the six foot. The residential was actually a four, well, this was a four foot, this had an office.
It's office.
Office down here. So we had a six foot requirement for the privacy wall.
Now, why would we need a six foot wall against office and four foot wall against residential?
I think that's something for us to look at in the ordinance, Marty. And if you remind Mr. Baumgarten that on a slow night, we can have that discussion.
So be it. Who is building, we already talked about the landscape. Who's building this wall? You folks are building the wall?
I believe it possibly would be shared with the developer to the north.
That, has that been discussed?
Initially.
Okay. Now, right now you call this, now first of all, the future spaces, I don't have a problem with that, just, just saying. Could be called land bank spaces. They use them, they don't, it could be. I don't have a problem with the word future. We could change that to land bank. I don't think it really matters. The point is it's there to be used.
Well, Mr. Commissioner Smith, my concern is that's going to be adding more paving area. And they're going to have to think about retaining water for that area.
Well, I would suggest that the applicant provides enough detention to accommodate that and the, the drives that are required to get around it. That whole thing's paved at some point. So in their design of detention, wherever that is, that has to be included, whether or not this is green space or not. Now, talked about this being a snowdrop. That's dandy when it's green. What happens if and when it gets paved? Where's the snow go?
There's area on the west side, along this area and here outside of the drive.
Is that in agreement with both parties?
It would be in the agreement.
It's not a lot of snowdrop area for a very large parking lot.
There's some to the south as well.
I would like to remind Mr. Smith, we are judging this on its merits.
I know.
There might be...
But they are serving both, much like the, much like the grading.
Right now, they are only serving the church.
Understood.
The church is the petitioner. The church is ultimately responsible to ensure that the engineering design meets our code. There is no variance from that. Rick, wait, let me finish. And that anything that they have committed to install, build, or design meets that specification and gets done within the timeframe of our site plan review process, period. That's, if it doesn't get built, then the site plan approval goes away. But it has to meet our standard.
Does Berkeley have a regulations for snowdrop areas? I don't think so.
No.
No, but they have to manage, everyone has to manage that in their way that they choose.
There is also some area across the...
There is.
The south end of the lot.
Mm-hmm.
Not a lot.
That might get into that police state that I was accused of.
When you rebuild this parking lot and everything under it and above it, the light standards, the detention, are you going to relocate the dumpster? Just, just asking. Dumpster screen? I don't remember seeing a dumpster screen there.
Possibly, possibly over near the...
It would make a lot sense.
Near the garage area would be closer to the building.
Just something about.
That's what I said.
Okay. Just for the record, the church needs, from my calculations, 58 of these spaces to get their 170 that they're required of this parking area. That number may be important later on. It may not.
Are there any more questions or comments from the commissioners? Mr. Tengari?
All right, yeah, I guess if the dumpster's going to be moved, it definitely needs to be added to the plan. And whatever that little hatch box over there is, if that's the dumpster now, that needs to be removed. Down on Harvard, there's this one spot, it's labeled three. It's a one parallel spot on the little driveway that you pull in. It looks like, I mean, I don't have a, you know, ruler with me or anything, but it kind of looks like you could get two spots there. One spot all by itself as a parallel space is a little, I don't know, it's just a little odd to me. I almost think it's actually safer, no, right here. I actually think it's safer to have more than one spot there.
It might be used for special circumstances.
I think there were three, and actually for funerals and stacking and drop off, handicap drop off.
There's three.
So they're supposed, okay, so I don't see the N stripe for the three, so...
No, one is a pull-in and then we have the center and then the one ahead of that. You're looking for the last stripe for the one closest to the door, I think.
Okay. All right. So there are three there. It's not three in addition to these two, okay? Just looked very odd to me the way it was hanging out there. It's, you've got, I mean, the dimensions of those spaces are quite different. Over on the west side of the site, there's a line that skirts the, for some reason I did not get this sheet, so... There's a line that skirts the edge of the parking area. What is that line? Is that the edge of the pavement? It's not labeled and there's this line.
Yeah, I think that's the end of the pavement.
Is that, is that the end of the pavement?
The dotted line?
No.
Not the dotted line, the solid line.
The solid line is the end of the pavement.
Okay, all right. So grass to the west beyond that is what's, okay.
Yeah, I think the dotted line was their future if they added that other, I'm not sure what that is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the older plan because I, for whatever reason, I did not receive this sheet, so...
I received two, so maybe I have yours.
Oh, yeah, you got it.
Okay, are there any other comments from the commissioners?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Number one, I, I don't believe I have any objection to designating a portion of the site plan for future parking. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if parking were expanded, they would have to apply for another site plan review, am I right?
Well, I...
We're not, we're not approving...
They would. I'd just like to avoid confusion as to what we're approving. That's my, my point.
Wait a minute.
I don't think I have a problem with that. And it looks to me like even if it were approved, there'd be enough space in there for snow storage.
The city manager has a point.
I only want to note that the expansion area is contained fully in a parcel zoned R1s that would require both a special land use and a site plan approval.
Oh, okay. So even more review. And then, assuming for purposes of discussion, that everybody parked in here is a churchgoer and not a, not a, a resident of the building. Just, just for purposes of discussion.
Given authority to park in there, yes.
I don't understand, Mr. Smith, but... I don't understand Mr. Smith's point about egress onto Harvard Road. Looks to me like this striping does encourage, uh, egress onto Harvard Road, given that the, um, lane on the extreme, um, to my right is, that's all reserved parking, as I understand. The rest of this parking looks to me like it's going to, it, it's going to be a natural move to, uh, egress on, on Harvard, so I don't understand that problem that was raised.
Well, I think it is.
I, I, I need to clarify some one thing before we move forward. It's my understanding that this site plan approval is for the entirety of including that small future parking-
Yeah.
Area, okay, okay. I just want to make sure that was, that seemed to be, even though it's, it may not be striped at this point, it's for, it includes this, all right, okay. There was some question on that, sorry.
The, the special use and the site plan approval.
We already, we already recommended the special land use approval to city council, now we're talking site plan. Okay, very good, sorry, go on.
So, also on egress is they could, uh, leave this site by heading out Coolidge, because there is the drive along the north side of the church.
Granted, uh, but I think the, I think what we are wanting to discourage most of all is egress onto Oxford.
Yep.
And I, I don't see-
Madam Chair?
I don't see why that isn't discouraged here.
Okay. Mr. Dean Smith?
A little while ago, you wanted to give everybody else a chance to talk, so I thought that was good. What I was going to suggest is that the applicant maybe share, uh, her thoughts on the design of the striping and how they would, uh, help or hurt the proposed development to the north.
Okay, but again, we're-
I, I understand, I just-
We are stepping into the beyond, and I, I really would like to put this in-
Yes.
Uh, it's merits that it has been applied for, which is, it's its own site plan review, regardless what happens outside of it.
Okay, understood.
And the church has a time limit on that site plan review to execute the vision that was approved and that, within the, the standards that we've given them, and if they don't, then we're all back here again in eighteen months, or twelve months, or whatever it might be. Or maybe never.
Keeping us on task is a good thing.
That's right. It's job security.
Do I get, do I answer the question?
You can go ahead and answer the question. Well, you know what, know what, I'm going to stick with my guns. Nope, we're, we're doing it on its merits, so, it's on its merits. That will come up in a future discussion, I'm sure. And you can bombard it at that time. Okay, so I'm going to open it to the citizen comments, again. If you would like to speak, we are trying to limit them to three minutes. If you have a comment that's been made by somebody before, please be kind. And please state your name and your address.
My name is Lisa Kempner, um, I live at 266 Arrow Columbia in Berkeley. I just, I'm looking for clarification, because I got really confused there. So the land banked area is, in essence, a separate parcel. So we approved the special use and a site plan, but if that doesn't hap, like, if it isn't done in six, twelve months, or eighteen months, or whatever it is, then they have to come back here, no matter what, right? Is that what I'm understanding correctly?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Additional comments here in the public? Okay. Do we have a motion on the site plan review for SP-0717? What is the commission's desire?
I, I want to make a clarification. Back to the six inch versus, or six foot versus four foot. You know, on the south wall, that is residential south of there, not commercial. So I ask again, why do we have a six foot wall in one place and four in another? Are they required to be six feet? Or are they both required to be four feet? I got the satellite here, sometimes they lie, but those are houses, dang it.
But I think-
It's not commercial.
I think the property of the south here is zone commercial. That's the difference.
Okay, if that's the answer.
It's not certain, it's not certain, um-
I'm just, I'm just saying what's there.
The height of the-
Religious designation.
The height of the required wall is a function of the zoning of the parcel on which the wall is being built. So you have the office zoning south of Harvard, so you get the six foot wall, you have R1D or whatever it is.
We could require this wall to be six feet.
As a condition of approval.
I would like to.
You could make it six, if you want to make a decision.
We've run into that, excuse me, we've run into that before, I think four is too low, because there's a lot of four-wheelers that go to church.
Yep.
Okay.
You can, you could put that as part of a condition.
So if you would like to make a motion that includes that, I encourage someone to make a motion.
Well, I can make a motion. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve this, um, site plan. SPO-7-17 with the following conditions. That when the parking lot is rebuilt, the detention, it will be rebuilt to current standards, including detention, which includes the land bank spaces, the future land bank spaces, and lighting above to current standards. The dumpster will be relocated. I would like to see a landscape plan. We see some little spots here, it doesn't really say what they are. That can be done by staff, reviewed by staff. I would also like to see some of these barrier-free spaces moved to give access. And I would like to see a six foot wall built along the west property line there. And I'd like to know who's going to build it. So, that's my, uh, motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Baumgarten, did you get all that?
Currently working on getting all of that.
Is this the time to discuss?
Yeah.
Yes, but I wanted to make sure that he had a chance to-
Let's see if he gets it.
Get all of the- Motion.
I will, uh, for accuracy purposes, I'll read back the conditions as I quickly scribble them. The site must meet all current storm and lighting standards.
Rebuilt, yes.
When rebuilt. The dumpster should be relocated to a site-specific, or?
To the eastern portion of the site, make it a little more convenient.
That, um, a landscape plan be submitted and reviewed by city staff.
At least.
Uh, that the barrier-free spaces be relocated to a-
Some.
Some barrier-free spaces be relocated.
Along Harvard.
And that a six foot fence be installed along the western property line, uh, with indication of who's responsible for developing that, or building it.
Six foot masonry wall.
Masonic.
And we still don't, and we also want some details on what that is, the colors and all that.
I think on this plan, it shows that it's a block wall with a brick pattern. But colors would be good.
Okay, I believe I now have it, thank you, sir.
And who's going to build the wall? A little clarification, who's going to build the wall?
Okay.
I'd like to, I would like to have you include that, uh, memo from Derek Schuler, too.
I will.
Did we want anything?
I seconded it.
Do we want anything stating about lighting, height of the poles, or? We did it on the other one.
I did on the other one because of the tightness of the site that bothered me.
Current standards, I said, but, yeah, I think we'd like to, uh, look at shorter poles.
Yeah, twelve to fifteen feet.
Should have thought, should have mentioned that.
We had that on the first one.
Okay, discussion.
Madam Chair.
Further discussion, Mr. Smith.
Uh, I, I think we need to clarify on this, who builds the wall? As far as the planning commission is concerned, our only concern should be that the wall is built to code-
Agreed.
And, uh, compatible with anything adjacent to it.
Agreed, it is the applicant's responsibility, once the site plan is approved, that it is built to the specifications approved, including current code and/or whatever elements we included in that. Whom builds it is not relevant. What is relevant is that it's within, it meets the standard and it's within the time period of the site plan approval. So, we, we-
I have no problem with that.
Getting into that police state.
Comment or a question?
Sure.
Um, the six foot masonry wall, does that have to be stepped down near the sidewalk?
Yes.
I think our standard is yes, that it has to step down.
At Harvard.
And that's part of the review process from engineering.
Right.
Additional comments? Okay, I think we can call a vote, Mr. Baumgarten.
Okay. Uh, let's see, we have Tangary?
Yes.
M. Smith?
Yes.
D. Smith?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes.
And Butler?
Uh, yes.
Motion passed.
All right, congratulations, archdiocese. Thank you for being so back and forth, so, okay. Our next agenda item, planned unit development, PUD-01-17, Berkeley Coolidge LLC, 2219 Coolidge Highway, the southwest corner of Coolidge and Oxford, tax ID 2518, 43115, 16 and 17, and a portion of 22. Lots thirteen through fifteen and fifty-two through fifty-three of the Denler Acres subdivision. Is requesting planned unit development approval for a mixed residential development. Are the petitioners here, yes and ready?
Miss Chair, before we proceed, um, you'll note that we received a traffic study. It was performed by Giffords Webster. Giffords Webster is my employer.
Okay.
I do not work in the same office as the person who did the traffic study, was not involved in it. Didn't really realize that we were doing it until it was done. At any rate, um, that is my relationship to the, um, for the company that did the traffic study. I would like to remain a part of this conversation, however, I will understand if my fellow commissioners feel that it would be more appropriate if I removed myself from the room.
Discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have absolutely no issue with, uh, Mr. Tanger continuing to participate in the discussion.
Okay. Mr. Richardson?
I didn't hear him say it, but I'm, I'm going to assume that he's, he's assuming that his relationship with his company will in no way, uh, influence any opinion or comment that he has about pertaining to the traffic issues, uh, that, uh, are raised by this project. Would that be, would that be fair?
I, yes, I mean, I, I feel I can be objective anyway.
All right. Perfect, well, take your word for it.
How many employees are there at Giffords Webster?
A hundred and five.
So the chances are pretty good you're not aware of everything that goes in and out.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the, Bill, Bill Stimson is in our Washington Township office, I'm in the Birmingham office. And, um-
Am I in your way?
Yes. We, I, I should also note that Giffords Webster doesn't have an ongoing relationship with the applicant. It's, it was to do the traffic study.
Any other concerns or comments?
I have no concerns.
No concerns.
I have no concerns.
I have no concerns, and we will see how this goes, if we've-
If I feel that it's getting too close to some, something, I will remove myself from the conversation, let's put it that way.
And I would help remind you of that. Okay, so, we're going to move forward. The applicants are ready, please state your name and tell us what you've brought for us.
Well, good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of this planning commission and the city of Berkeley. My name is Bennetteri Bello, and I'm here as a member of the applicant, Berkeley Coolidge LLC. At the last planning commission hearing on June twenty-seventh, we were seeking your approval for recommendations to the city council of our PUD application. Your decision that evening was to table the recommendation pending our providing further information concerning our multiple housing development. The commission asked for three items. One, a complete traffic impact analysis. Two, to provide a parking plan and information on the parking easements with Our Lady of La Salle Church. And three, to enhance the elevations of the townhouses. As we've done in the past, we are here this evening to fulfill those requests. In addition, we have also addressed each of the comments from members of this planning commission would like to introduce to you some of the modifications we have made to the plans. Based on those comments, suggestions, or critiques, we trust that these improvements will further substantiate our qualifications to proceed to the city council. As a reminder, we have relocated the new construction building further to the east, which by code was not a requirement, eliminated a full floor of apartment units as well as the rooftop deck amenities, and replaced only a portion of those units lost onto a new level upon the former school building, thereby reducing the overall total unit, rental units in the project. We have also heavily buffered and screened our project with materials or landscape, and taken great care to minimize any negative impact on the neighbors and streets to the west or upon Coolidge Road. In regards to the traffic impact study, we have engaged Giffords Webster, Giffords Webster Engineers, a longstanding and well-respected civil engineering company that has a sixty-five-plus year history and extensive experience in the traffic planning and engineering fields. The senior traffic consultant that performed this study has had forty-seven years in the analysis and design of complex private and public development, including for the Federal Highway Administration, General Motors Corporation, the Pentagon, and on behalf of many other substantial cities, governmental agencies, and private entities. You have each received the traffic impact study, and a presentation will be made by Giffords Webster. As reflected in the study, the impact of traffic from our development is, and I quote, negligible to the status quo. Still, we have offered and agreed that we will post signage within the property that will discourage the use of any residential street, either inbound or outbound. Also, we will continue to work with the public safety department to install other signage on those streets that will, as a result, allow the city to issue tri- traffic or parking tickets should a resident disregard the new regulations prohibiting use of those streets. We have submitted new elevations and materials for the townhouses that are part of your review package, and we will briefly describe those improvements in our presentation. We have delivered a concise parking analysis and copies of the restrictive easement agreement, a document that governs the construction improvements, the use of the properties, cooperative efforts to share the access to the properties, and the maintenance in perpetuity. We have responded to the other suggestions made by this commission and have subsequently introduced, as you will see. First, on the new building, we will draw your attention to the replacement of the peak roof with a lower building and the roof line as well. Second, to the new construction building, we have added a green environmentally friendly cedum roof that will act as a filtration system and slowly discharge water into the storm drainage systems. Third, also to the new construction building, we have reduced the amount of glass and have created a new facade design that scales the building down and breaks up the facade into smaller features. Fourth, we have submitted a landscape plan that buffers and screens neighboring properties and excess facility requirements, and prevents headlights from shining into adjacent properties. Fifth, we have provided a photometric design that precludes any light spillover into neighboring properties. Sixth, our interior flow design ensures that the turning radii of any vehicles, especially for emergency purposes, will not be impeded. Seventh, we have provided the city, the PUD, being the planned unit development agreement for its review and comment, we have included, eighth, we have included plans for the phasing of construction and temporary staging areas for its materials. Nine, having had initial meetings with the Department of Public Works and its city's civil engineering consultants, we stand ready to prepare the necessary preliminary civil engineering calculations and drawings as quickly as the site plan is approved, and then when we know where the buildings and other improvements will be located, we can accomplish that. Lastly, we have presented to the city studies and reports from MIT and Harvard universities indicating that this type of project will have a positive impact on the property values based upon the high quality of the project design and the stable standard of tendency of this proposed development. Having met the requirements of the recognizable community benefits, and time after time proving again that we will work with this city and its constituents to solve any issues that may arise before or after development, construction, and operation of this housing project- may arise before or after development, construction, and operation of this housing project, we respectfully ask for you to recommend to the city council that they approve our request for this PUD, and if necessary, subject to a signed REA, an approved PUD agreement, and approval of final engineering. Thank you for your consideration. We'd like to start with the modification to the development since our prior hearing with our, with the assistance of our architect, Joe Nowitzki, followed by a presentation of the traffic impact study by Mike Darga of Giffords Webster's Engineers.
Good evening, Joe Nowitzki, 1755 Royal Lab, Berkeley. You can see from the, this, the first image here, the changes that we made to the three-dimensional stature of the building. The, the cedum roof here is a substantial, substantial attempt at trying to mitigate some of the stormwater runoff that ultimately is going to, this development is going to actually improve the entire facility or surrounds, if you realize that the entire thing is paved right now. Anything we do, and including the new detention system, retention system, will improve the conditions in a more regional level. We took the, with your suggestion, there was a very strong statement of attempt to address the city's street structure as we, as we look forward to, and we have really radically reduced the glass and the impact of that, still allowing a presence on the street. We have taken the brick all the way around the building and improved some of the, the other elements on these buildings, and we'll go through that in a second when we have a bigger plan. It was suggested that we take these parking places in the front, up at Oxford, out of the front setback area. It was, it was an oversight on our part. I gotta say that that was a terrific suggestion. It's safer, it's better, it will have a better presence on the street, and, and serve the community much better that way. We've, we've put some effort into the front edge of this building so that there's a place to be for each one of the tenants beyond the porch, and ultimately have a much more shared approach to their, their individual units instead of just these long lines, skinny little ribbons of concrete. The, the, the lighting levels have been addressed, we'll go over that with the photometrics when we can. Primarily, this is a composite that we believe reflects both the church's needs and the Berkeley's needs. We were working with the same photometric consultant, there's no question in my mind, we will cooperate in that regard on engineering. It has to, it simply has to. One, one pipe leads to another, and we'll connect the dots. We do that, we do that well, and we'll do that adequately. The, the, at the end of the day, we have 250 places through the shared agreement with the church, we have 150 on our lot, we have over 400 spaces. When you, when you break down the calculations, there is a 35-car excess relative to the two cars parked and the church's needs. That does, however, include these 16. So we're, if we're gonna exclude that from the dialogue, we're still a dozen or so over the, the required and recommended parking calculations. The, this, the school inherently has, has not changed dramatically, with the exception that we, in front of you, have matched the brick to the campus, all the brick on the building. This panel was put together by our good friends at BrickTech, Bob Weeks, Love Island, Berkeley. He took great pains to match this brick. There's four different bricks in this, in this tumbled mix. It's an incredible match when you get up close and personal. You'll see that we used a, a new color printer this time, and the colors don't quite all marry each other, the intent is, the bricks will, all the brick on the property is the same brick. The, the floor plans inherently have not changed. We're, we're considering a, a deck level here on this portion of the building, it'll be blown up in a different slide. Right here, it's complete, oop, back, it's completely shielded from the rest of the building. This building's higher, this building's higher, it's completely shielded and open yet to the south. No noise, you can't be seen from the street, this is an impediment here, the stair, the stair tower here. Why is that, boy, I'm not very good at that one. And it's open to the south because this is a very low area. This here is the boiler room, so it's one story, we have access because that's a second story. This is the new facade of the, of the new apartment building. You notice the entirety of the glass structure that was once there is gone. We've put a curved linear structure over the entry, very similar to the curved, curved linear structure that is sistered on the existing school building off Coolidge right now. It's the main entry, it will be the portal to Oxford, it will be the statement of entry. We have, we have broken the, the entry, the texture of the building down so it's got some relief across the face of the building, using a combination of thin brick, if you will, face brick and full brick, and these bricks here before you come in, every size that I just mentioned, from bearing to thin brick. It's a really terrific company. Yes, sir? The stairwell? Oh, the stairwells back here are, ooh, 170 feet from the edge of the street, 42 feet from the edge of the building. They're there because we're hovering in a balloon 35 feet in the air and looking at the building. You won't ever see them. You'll, you, you can't see them from a perspective anywhere but inside there are other apartment buildings. They can't be seen from the street by virtue of, of geometry. You can see how far they are from this, from the face of the building. In every dimension, they're, they're hidden. From a perspective, they can't be seen. They're there to service this roof. There's not much on this roof. At this point, we're using heat pumps, so we don't have, we don't have a condenser farm up on the roof, I'm proud to say, but you'll notice now that we have incorporated the grills on the perimeter of the building for the fresh air component and the exchange. But they are heat pumps with a water-driven system. We had a collection of engineers over at the building the other day, of the existing building, they marveled at the, at the quality of the building and the value that was represented. Without any, without laboring on that, we, we, we have made, made no changes to the under, under park or covered parking area under the apartment building. We have a strong collection of bike racks, we expect them to be used. This, the, there's a, this is, there's a better drawing of the cedum and walking paths on, on the interior courtyard of this, of this building, allowing, facing south, allowing light air, and, and someplace for quiet entertainment and conversation, benches, brick pavers, and these are just different types of cedum. Cedum comes in many different colors and pattern, and, and breeds, so you just pick a different color and you get a different pattern. The, this is, again, the extent of the roofing is cedum. The front of this building, again, is the same brick we're using everywhere else, it's a mix. We put all the mutton bars and mullions in the windows, married them all the way around, made the windows much larger than they were, and married the images around the building. So all the windows are the same, we've took the, we've taken the brick all the way around the building with, except for the sloped area here, it's very, it's, yeah, we felt that it's a better material for that sloped edge of the roof. We, we put the same trim and issues, same trim and brick around the entire building. The floor plans have not changed appreciably. We might move a laundry room or something, but that's internal. The photometric is a composite done by our friends at Pro-Tec. They have taken great stakes, great pains to make sure that we use the same lighting standards, heights, poles, fixtures. If it's the desire of the commission that we lower our standards, it'll make brighter spots, hot spots, but we can, we can accommodate that, it's just a hotter spot under the lamp. They're shielded, they're box lights, it won't make really much difference to anybody off-site. It will make a hotter spot on the landscape. If that's what we choose to do, we can do that. The, this is, the, the next slide you'll see is showing, it's exactly the same drawing and the same author with the same set of concerns. The perimeter has been addressed, so there's zero on, through those trees, zero across that landscape, and we've extended it, showing you that, and he had to, he had to modify his program to allow penetration through the trees if possible. It was interesting for him to do that. Yeah, the entire perimeter, right. This is, this is, Bennett, I'd like you to talk about this plan.
We were asked to provide you with a, the staging areas being where we are going to, once we commence construction, where we're going to stage materials, and then the phasing of the project. Phase one will be the existing school building, and we anticipate this will take between seven and nine months of construction, and, and that including adding the fourth floor to it. I think we've gone through the conversion, don't need to go into too much detail, but nonetheless, while we are under construction there, we will be using this area here essentially the footprint of the proposed new construction building as our staging area. And once we then start the construction of the next phases, which we're calling Phase 2A and 2B, 2A being the new construction building, and 2B being the townhouses, we will then shift everything over into this area right here, and this will be this temporary staging area. It also is comprised of other elements that we will, in the future, convert to, that being, for instance, the excess underground storm drainage when we come to the calculations. Our intentions are to use first cedum as the, as a filtration system and for the purpose of slower drainage. We're, we're potentially going to put an oversized piping within the project, and at that point, we'll probably, what may be left over, if anything, we will then have underground detention for the rest of it. Everything will meet the requirements of Oakland County standards as well as everything that's necessary for this, for this city.
The landscaping hasn't appreciably changed, with the exception of, you saw the, the intensity up here on Oxford, it'll be much more beautiful as we, as, as we've shown you on the other slide. It has been enhanced. We now have added individual tables for outside dining beyond the porches at grade level for a, a more convenient conversation place. The landscaping along Coolidge will be outstanding at various parts of the season, it's really colorfully involved and beautiful. The landscaping along the church will be affected due to the fact that it's, it's married up and, and bolstered by masonry walls along the side entrance. This is Jim's lens, Jim's cedum design, we tried to emulate that in our own drawing, he did it much better. The, the, the four images you see before you are correctly so-named. This one had an incorrect title on it in your package, I'm sorry, it's my fault. We corrected it before it got to the screen here, but I think it's, it's got a presence that, the building on, on, on Coolidge has an outstanding civic presence. I think it's a proud element, and this, and this, and it's one of those places that the city is going to use and appreciate over time. There's an article today in the paper about the lack of housing across America. It's, it's going to help. This, you'll see from standing on Oxford, you can't see the, even the, you can't even see the top of the building anymore. It's below the ridge line from across the street, from across the street. This is actually a Google image superimposed to scale. You can't see that building. If you look down the street from Oxford, you can't see the building beyond the trees. It's, it's virtually impossible to see from most places. We tried to have as little impact as possible on this community from a overwhelming perspective. Bennett?
Joe, could you go back just one slide, please?
Just like also mentioned that what you may be able to, hopefully you notice, is that existing trees themselves are gonna be higher than the, the height of our, of the townhouses, as well as, for the most part, the, the new construction buildings. So everything is really well buffered in every regard here. This is something that we have shown you in the past, and this is relative to the benefits of the community at large and the carryover to the neighborhood. I don't think there's, it's necessary at this point unless asked to go through this, but we expect that this is going to be a tremendous generator for stabilizing the neighborhoods, increasing property values, as well as certainly the carryover to the Coolidge corridor and the retailers and service businesses. At this point, unless, unless there are additional questions right now, we'd like to hand this over to Mike Darga for the traffic impact study portion of this.
Do you want to say, do you want to say, Adam? No, I have Mike. Okay. Mike is from Giffords Webster Engineers.
All right, good evening, so again, Mike Darga with Giffords Webster, and as was spoken earlier, Bill Stimson from our office prepared the traffic study, I'm representing him this evening. Bill's been doing this for over 45 years and is well-versed in the traffic studies, and was responding to a request to prepare this from the last planning commission meeting for the city. Just a quick introduction again, I mean, we've spoken about many of these things. When we start these studies, we do a review with the city of what we want the scope to be and how we're responding. So we're preparing this for the 130 apartments, the condos, the conversion of the two school buildings, and the construction of the new building. And what do we look for when we're doing these traffic impact studies? So we proposed a scope to the city, that was the evaluation of the four intersections surrounding the site. So that was Oxford at Kiplinger, Oxford at Coolidge, Harvard at Coolidge, and Harvard at Kiplinger. We evaluate the four new driveways proposed for the site, and then we look at driveway and access recommendations for the project. All familiar with the existing site as it is, with the proposed building being on the north half of the site, we took traffic counts and traffic movements at the surrounding four intersections and got updated traffic counts on Coolidge so that we can prepare a adequate evaluation of how the traffic's impacted on the site. Again, the four driveways are the two on Oxford, there is the central drive coming out onto Coolidge itself, and the one existing shared drive with the parking lot onto Harvard to the south. So what did we look at? We did traffic volume, peak hour counts, peak hours, 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. roughly in the morning, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. in the evening on Coolidge and at the four intersections. We do an evaluation of those traffic volumes for both existing conditions, so we're looking at what is out there today, background conditions, what is happening at the time several years out on the site, assuming the project did not get built, so that we're comparing apples to apples when we're done, and future traffic conditions. So with the project in place, how does that compare to existing and background? Trip generation, what is the proposed project going to be? So we run for the number of units, the number of bedrooms, and come up with the number of cars and vehicles that would be entering and exiting the site. Trip distribution, we, from both experience and looking at where existing traffic is going on the site, whether they're going north, south, onto Coolidge, west, east, etc., from where people are coming to and from the site. Trip assignment, basically a combination of the trip generation and tip, trip distribution for how that all comes together, and the impact analysis. So without going into all, all these numbers are in your report, don't want to go into all these specific details, but what it ends up with being for all the intersections is a level of service. Basically, it's a letter grade from A to F. A is essentially very little delay, somewhere possibly in the 10-second range, and F- always operates at a level of service A, both existing through proposed. Oxford and Coolidge, I'm setting off because that's the little bit outlier here and I'll show you the full chart on the next slide. Harvard and Coolidge at the signal has a level of service basically in the B or C range, which is still quite acceptable. Harvard and Kiplinger all operate as an A. The four proposed driveways, the two on Oxford always operate at a level of service A. Coolidge to Middle Drive, which is proposed as right in, right out, level of service B approximately, and the Harvard Drive a level of service A. So all of these are operating at a quite high level of service. A little small in size here, but Oxford and Coolidge being an unsignaled intersection does have a lower level of service, both existing, background and proposed. So it gets anywhere from, you can see the very top level current traffic, we have some As, some Cs and Ds. The Cs and Ds and PM was Es and Fs existing are in the east-west, so Coolidge goes straight through, so really isn't impacted. It's Oxford on each side coming into it that's impacted by just being stop controlled and not signalized. Gets a little bit worse under future background, just because there's an assumed increase in traffic just from the area increasing and other projects. And future background, we have Es and Fs in the eastbound directions, Coolidge still stays in the A and B range. So there is a slight impact there, but it's not major. Once we have these numbers, we look at what do we do with this? So we're looking at what are the numbers out there? Our trip generation, there's our AM peaks, AM and PM peaks of what's coming in and out, basically what you'd expect. Level of service again is usually A and B, some Cs. Stop control at Oxford's lower, so what do we do with that? And we look at where these people are going. So we make recommendations on where should people go and how can this project mitigate these impacts? So as was already talked about with the presentation, the Coolidge driveway in the middle is right turn, right turn in, right turn out, so basically not adding to any congestion, somebody trying to turn left northbound from Coolidge or northbound onto Coolidge. Directional signing interior, trying to really encourage the use of people instead of going out north to Oxford, pushing them to the south, excuse me, the north, yes, the north to Oxford, pushing them south to Harvard. The study is sensitive enough that as many as six to eight cars changing from Harvard to Oxford can keep the level of service up at Oxford much more similar to what it is today and not really impact the area. So we're in conjunction with the developer and the owner here, recommending those changes to push the traffic south, use the signal, which even with the additional traffic still stays at a level of service A and B and quite a good use there. And that is the highlights. Again, the full report is in there, it has been reviewed by the city's traffic engineer and we didn't entertain any questions or comments from the city on the study.
Okay. Comments, questions from the commission?
I can start.
So on the planning, on the actually traffic study, I'm going to start there. So if you can back up a couple slides to, I think it's one more. Or maybe, no, it's the other way. Next slide. So your AM peak and PM peak, we're looking at 130 units on this site. Where do the 60 out and 63 in come from? Where do those numbers come from?
That is from a distribution, I'm looking at what the units are.
Microphone.
Microphone, yeah.
We use something called ITE, which gets us to just how many cars are projected for a building of this size and this type of distribution of units. And then this is in the peak hour, so even though you might have 130 units, they're not all coming out in the same two hours. So this is the two busiest hours of the day, both AM and peak, AM and PM.
So you're saying there'll be 60 people, potentially 60 people leaving in the morning between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM?
Correct. And similar, the PM peak, four to six PM, 97 total in and out, 64 in, normal distribution kind of there with more people coming back in the evening. But again, that's the two busiest hours, so you'll have some people coming in before 4:00 PM, some after 6:00 PM.
Okay, so what if it's worse than that? What if it's 20, 25% worse? What would that be the impact to this study?
Looking at most of the levels of service, considering that we're in the A and B range for most of this, I would have to run the numbers, so I'm not going to spout a specific thing, but it's not going to change them that radically because you're right, you're running at a very good level of service, a little tougher on the stop control at Oxford and Coolidge, so we need to push them to the south. But the signal is operating very well still and even pushing those vehicles to the south into the signal would not cause it to fail.
All right. Was there any consideration to a left turn signal at that Harvard and Coolidge intersection? Because right now, there's no left turn signal there. At, no, it's at Harvard and...
So the existing signal?
Yeah, the existing signal.
For the numbers, we're seeing that it's not requiring it based on the breakdown of traffic and the level of service that it doesn't need it. It's something that still could be reviewed with a city project, but we're not seeing it as a requirement that it wouldn't change the level of service that greatly here.
We were also understanding that there is a, there's some communication going on right now between the cities of Oak Park, Huntington Woods, Berkeley, as well as Royal Oak to resynchronize each of the traffic lights along Coolidge Road. And we would hope to be able to put some in, have some input at that point to resynchronizing the timing at Harvard and potentially lengthen that so that it allows for a greater gap onto Coolidge Road for people looking to make left or right-hand turns from, whether it's Oxford or any other street along Coolidge.
All right, another question for you, the data you collected for traffic counts, where did that come from?
The data, we did video counts and in-person counts at the four intersections, so that's actual data from within the past month. The data on Coolidge itself is taken from SEMCOG, from counts that they've done within recent history. And then the background counts are added to from there. So we take increases usually one to two percent annual, so those numbers are added to from there. We looked at the new development coming in just to the south of the project, added in that potential volumes and then pushed from there. So it's, they're all real numbers.
So the new data you collected over, how many days did you collect that?
There were a couple days in the middle of the peak, we looked at them being in the summer and compared that to the fall. And actually, for what we're seeing, most of the time taking them even in July here are as good of numbers or slightly even more conservative than if we took them later in the year.
All right, I'm good for now.
Ms. Kapilansky. I had a couple of questions on the green roof. So I'm not as familiar with the sedum material. Can you talk a little bit about the maintenance that's required for that and how it would impact the stormwater and what happens? I mean, are you going to get weeds growing up in it? Is it going to die off in the middle? How do you address those concerns?
Yeah, it's definitely not simply putting up a flat roof or some other kind of tower base or other materials. The purpose is, and this has been utilized for decades and decades, probably the best evidence of that has been over the last near 30 years, the Ford headquarters as well as several of their facilities installed sedum roofs many years ago and found them to be tremendous assets for protecting the environment as well as certainly for their maintenance. The sedum itself is a type of a grassy succulent. It's going to get thicker, heavier with, as it absorbs some of the rainwater and the maintenance of it, again, you saw that we drew attention to the stairwells that are going up there. Approximately once a month by our standards, what we're told by other parties is you don't have to maintain it every month, you can go up there every six months to a year. And principally, there is, the sedum will be on a base that's going to be just above, the roof will still, there will still be a flat roof underneath it that is there for an additional level of protection, might, you know, call that, as well as insulation. But the sedum itself will be in a, just to call it a raised box and it has tremendous ability to thrive even in dry weather. Weeds or anything coming up in there, that's part of the maintenance, we would have that removed. But the most important thing is to ensure that nothing has collected inside of the drainage, the drains themselves, so that it's flowing freely. Now, it's not going to be a pouring of rain. Again, the purpose of this is to slowly diminish the outlet into the storm drainage systems below ground.
So is that irrigated then or you're relying just on rainwater?
No, we're just relying on the rainwater itself.
Okay. One other question for right now about the timeline, you talked about having the school portion completed in seven to nine months, but then I didn't hear what the timeline was for the completion of the rest of the site.
I'm sorry, yes, and then the new construction and townhouses, those will be another nine to 12 months.
So a year and a half, two years for the...
Yes.
That's all I have right now.
Madam Chair?
Dean Smith?
Just a couple of questions and a comment. One, I'm de-emphasizing the Oxford entrance makes a big difference.
Yes.
It helps give the building an appearance of being lower. Sedum, I'm familiar with what's on the roof of the Ford plants. How does it hold up to foot traffic?
Well, there's, yeah, there shouldn't be.
It's the first time I've seen it, you have it in your lower level and you've got walkways.
Those are brick pavers.
Oh, those are brick pavers.
Yes.
All right, I didn't catch that.
But no, it is not meant to be trampled upon.
Right.
It does grow back quickly, but nonetheless.
Yes, but it's not designed...
Yes.
...to be trod on. I was looking at the traffic study and we got an earlier version that I was able to spend some time with. And then I did an audit in my own neighborhood. You know, we've got a mix of retirees, shift workers, whatnot, and it came out pretty good. It was about a third of the people do leave at the peak time, others are up and gone earlier and then we've got a lot of people that work from home or do shift work. So the traffic flows in and out of the building don't really trouble me at all. It's really, it's a signage and maybe some law enforcement activity to create the behaviors that want to be sustained.
Well, not to overemphasize it, but I think we've mentioned it in past hearings and as well as today again, this is our intention. Our intention, we see that, you know, what we need to do is to guide the traffic over to Harvard and the way that we intend to do that, again, we'll start off with point one. We are going to, we had thought about putting in what's called a pork chop, a hook that would not allow for traffic to turn onto, but after discussing this further, it seems that it would have also inhibited the church traffic. So we did away with that. Signage is going to be the primary thing that we're going to try to work with on an internal basis to guide people. But we are also going to enforce that in our lease agreements. We are going to enforce that the restricted parking for the church is not to be driven through that aisle and certainly no parking upon it. There will be, there'll be cars that will have to be then towed away and as I've discussed with the police chief, we will have signage upon the property of what towing company their car may have gone to. On the street levels, we can't say at this point exactly what we're going to have, but essentially we would like to suggest the city that we would like to have some signage that anything west, eastbound coming from, if somebody did decide that they wanted to try to save that one tenth of a second, I'm sorry, one third of 10 seconds to drive through the neighborhood that they will not be able to make in case of Harvard, a left-hand turn. This is for residents only, no left-hand turn into the project on Oxford, no right-hand turn. And the police may certainly after that enforce it with tickets. We will be looking, our property management company will be looking for people that have, are parking incorrectly, taking advantage of situations and driving in other areas that they just shouldn't be. Also, we want to try to encourage right only off of Oxford under Coolidge. There will be, as we run along, Joe, would you mind going to the main slide plan please? Ours would be better if we can. We will be encouraging only a right-hand turn onto Oxford and that might be convenient certainly for those that are living more of the, on the northerly edge. We understand that. And that'll be, people are going to take the path of least resistance, we're going to allow for that up to a point. But making a left-hand turn over here, this is something we're going to try to discourage and have people go through the parking lot so that they can have an easier way to utilize the traffic, the traffic light here at Harvard. And we hope that to be the main exit as a controlled environment. Again, when you start to look at the numbers, we're into something of the nature of about one car every roughly 10 minutes or so. So it's a trickle effect. It's not to say that there won't be a bunch of people leaving at the same time, but for the most part, it's a trickle effect throughout the day. There will be at our main entrance, and I say entrance, it will not be allowing for a left-hand turn. We feel that's too tight with the traffic signal that'll be here at Harvard and a stack up could cause for some problems. So we will be posting signage of no left-hand turns and that will be something that the city and police department can enforce as well because it'll be onto a major road. Off of, as I mentioned, off of Oxford, we have two curb cuts. One, as a reminder, on the far west. Okay, this will be an entrance or an exit, but if you recall, we have what's called a crash gate here. The crash gate will prevent cars from flowing in, so in this case, there'll be no reason for the most part for anybody other than these owners of the townhomes to use this entrance at all. That'll circulate them through to the garages. Anybody else would be blocked from driving through. This entrance, if they were to make a right-hand turn, we anticipate having a fair amount of our residents from Beaumont Hospital. They would essentially be taking a left, a right-hand turn onto Oxford and making a left-hand turn into the project and going to wherever they're, whichever building they're going to live in. They would be encouraged to make a right-hand turn onto the main entrance and certainly Harvard is open for all that as well. But in reverse, we will be dissuading every which way possible from anybody making a right-hand turn onto Harvard. So we have signs posted there. We will also have signs posted both eastbound and westbound with the cooperation of the city, I should say the Department of Public Safety to post signs over here of the illegality of turning through those avenues.
I think we're good on coming in and out. More questions?
More of a comment than a question. One of my key concerns since day one is the size of your parking lot and the ability to hold the number of cars that...
to hold the number of cars that your, your residents would have. Uh, I look at Village Green, they manage some 40,000 apartment buildings, or apartment, units, not buildings. Uh, I figure they have a pretty good idea of what lives in there. So, what I did, again, using my neighborhood where I'm familiar, I, a couple of days, walked up and down the streets. Something that I was stunned by, we have 54 single-family homes, actually 53 single-family homes and one multifamily on my block. Of those homes, uh, 22 have only one car. They're single people or, or whatnot, but they just have one car total in the driveway. There are 24 that have two cars, and there are three, I'm sorry, there are eight that have three or more cars. Um, of the eight people that have three or more cars, four of them have college-age young people at home. So, that's something that is not one of your proposed, uh, key, key clients. Uh, one has an RV in their backyard, and I think we've talked about no RVs in your development.
No oversized vehicles.
Uh, two of them have classic cars, and the last one is me, who just can't get rid of stuff. But as it turns out, on my block, which is Larkmore between Stanford and Cass, excluding the, the eight people with multiple cars that, that would not be, uh, part of this development, we have an average of 1.52 cars per single-family home, and those single-family homes have at least two bedrooms. Uh, if we had a shared parking lot that just did my block, one and a half cars per, uh, single-family home would be plenty. So, I, I was adamantly opposed to anything that you would do that would have less than two cars per unit. The facts don't work in my favor. So, I, I, when I see the one and a half and I, I look at what's in the potential, uh, shared parking agreement, the number of spaces in that agreement plus what's, uh, part of the proposed lot gets you to the 1.5. So, one concern I no longer have is the adequacy of parking. Uh, the only other concern that I've got is still, I'm, I'm bothered by the building height. I look at the, uh, proposed townhouses, they are taller than the adjacent single-family structures, uh, and of course, you've got a three-story plus parking proposed for the, uh, behind that. What could you do with the grading of the site to drop those down a little bit more?
Well, it's not quite that simple, but...
Uh, microphone.
If I, maybe if I might remind you of this little thing yesterday called an eclipse, it was this little moon that blocked out the entire sun. That's what you're able to do, that's the visualization. It can achieve that. However, in answer to your question, if we were to take the building and drop it down below grade, that would cause, uh, terrible harm to the project. The harm being that we would then be, in fact, I'm going to let Joe answer this as an architect, because what this does is it causes for a dip that has to, um, be extended for many feet, uh, as a incline and a decline, and subsequently, um, we lose a lot of parking spaces, that for one.
Oh, okay. I, I understand the geometry, geometry. What I'm looking for is something that says the lot right now is probably 15 to 18 inches above the street.
Hmm.
It's, it's up there. You, you gotta go up a little ramp to get in.
We've done a topo and it's, it's...
Okay, and I, I can be correct because again, facts are facts.
There is a variation of overall in the entire site, 18 inches. Now, if you're taking it down to grade, actually, it doesn't even matter, it's the grade, street grade level, it's the same thing also. We, we don't have that kind of, and I, I can show you the topo.
Okay, then, then it's an optical illusion...
Yeah.
...when I'm in and out of the driveway.
I think so.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm done.
Mr. Richardson?
I have a couple of questions regarding the park, the, uh, I'm sorry, the traffic study. Um, I want to make, I, I want to, uh, understand how you arrived at your projected peak hour totals per individual intersection, and particularly, I guess, the Coolidge-Oxford intersection. Um, I've read over the report, did you take the existing peak hour, um, totals and then the, and then apply the percentages, um, of, um, of tra, anticipated traffic at peak hour to kind of extrapolate, um, what, from, from, from that to what you anticipate the peak hour, uh, traffic totals will be at each intersection? Is that, is that how you did that?
Basically, I mean, we're starting with the existing data.
All right.
We up it to a background data, but then we take the degeneration from the actual development and apply factors of which direction we believe everybody's coming to and from, which is partially based on the existing, partially looking at what our market for the new building may be, meaning whether it's north or south or whichever, and add all those two, um, together to come up with that distribution across all the intersections.
And maybe there's something else I don't understand. I, I thought you used a 50, 50% north, 50% south distribution on...
Correct. I mean, the actual numbers as studied came in slightly different. They were like 48, 52, so we took it as, it's a roughly 50-50 north-south, up and down, north and south on Coolidge.
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm a little uneasy with the, with the reasonableness of that projection, given that you may have a lot of, um, Beaumont employees, uh, here, and they may be tempted to exit, uh, onto, uh, Oxford, I'd be, you know, exit onto Oxford instead of going south. It's kind of counterintuitive to go down to, to Harvard and, and then go north. Can you comment on what you will do to discourage the use of Oxford and Coolidge intersection during, during peak hours? I know we've talked about discouraging use of residential side streets. I'm concerned about a backup at that intersection, uh, possibly developing because of the majority of traffic during peak hours might use that instead of...
It's not going to be the majority. We're picturing a fairly even split.
Yeah, okay.
But between the signage and the internal work as been described as far as the lease agreements and whatnot pushing people south, but there's the reality is that the backup on Oxford, or, yeah, at Oxford and Coolidge will be enough on itself that I think there will be some push there that you'll be able to go through the development, go south to Harvard to the signal, and the signal will be functioning enough while you'll actually get out quicker.
Because we know that the people in the neighborhood that don't live in the development, they're going to be impacted too when they try to use, uh...
Exactly. So, I mean, that, that takes that entire number into account. So, I think, as I was saying, to get the level of service back to more reasonable, it's only six or seven cars that we need to push south.
Okay.
And I think with the combination of the enforcement from the city, the encouragement, education from the apartment management pushing people to the south, it's actually going to operate faster and you'll, as in, counterintuitive is to go south to go north, you'll actually get out quicker.
Um, one other question. You are making an assumption that people will not, uh, cut through, uh, will not exit 11 Mile onto Kipling to get into the apartment complex after the, uh, signal is adjusted at, uh, 11 and Coolidge. Am I right about that? That you're, you're saying now there's a backup and people are going to be tempted to use Kipling because of that backup, but after that signal is adjusted, you don't anticipate a backup there?
No, because I mean, part of the whole corridor study should improve that to the level where again, going through the two signals, going north on Coolidge, coming in from that side should be a quicker trip.
Um, you know, just on a pure gut level, that, that strikes me as, as fairly optimistic thinking, but I, I, I appreciate your explanation.
Additional questions? Comments?
If I might add, is it, would it be appropriate to have someone from, uh, Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark also state their opinion on the study?
Well, I wanted to bring that up, actually. There is, um, you know, the original study was done, Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark provided a rather pointed critique of the original study. I understand, um, you know, we have a, a letter dated August 21st, which is a counterpoint to the critique. Um, I don't necessarily see where there has been, um, agreement as to this point, but if somebody from HRC wants to come up and talk about this, it's, it's part of the public record, and the public has a right to hear whether or not the cities engineer in this matter, because none of us are traffic experts.
Again, Roland Alex with Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark. Um, I did not personally review this, um, this traffic study, but our HRC's traffic signals, our traffic study specialist, Colleen Hill, did. Um, she and I have had multiple conversations about this after the response letter from Giffords Webster that we received late yesterday and reviewed today. Um, in general, HRC is, uh, accepting of the traffic study, and, um, we are in agreement that, um, most of the points that were made, all of the specific points that they've addressed today, the limiting of left turns onto Coolidge, the pushing of traffic south onto Harvard, does result in an acceptable, um, project from a traffic standpoint. So, we are in, in agreement after the comments that were made.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I will note that, um, that letter was not provided to you in advance. Uh, you did get it when you came to your packet, or when you came to your seat today, so I do apologize for the, the short timing of it.
No, that's okay.
But it is a substantial rebuttal to, um, HRC's initial review, so...
Well, they are, we are the, um, they are the technical resource that we rely on, and since we pay them to look out for our best interest. Are there any other comments on...
Yeah, I have comments. So, again, you know, we can talk as much as we want about trying to control the direction people will enter and exit the site. People are creatures of habit. They're going to do what's they perceive as the easiest and quickest way, especially, I would think, in the mornings, but even in returning the site, I think we're going to have people coming down Kipling to come up either Oxford or Harvard to get in and out of this site. Uh, and, uh, I just, that's my biggest concern right now is, you know, after Mr. Smith's, uh, Dean Smith's, uh, little study of his neighborhood, I'm kind of surprised by...
I was stunned.
You know, and, and you're considering, like you said, single-family homes are two to three bedrooms in some cases. So, so I'm feeling a little better about the parking, but I'm still concerned about how tight it's going to be, uh, you know, and I think, you know, you're saying that from Oxford, you're not going to be able to see that four-story building because that's really what it is, even though there's parking underneath it, but if you're the neighbors to the west, you're going to be in your yard and you're still going to be able to see that building, and, and it's impacting them. So, I have huge reservations about this project. So, I, I, I know it's, I know you've mentioned it in the past that it's an economy of scale, and, and you need to get as many units as you can in because it's not cheap doing what you want to do. But I'd be much more comfortable with more townhomes on the site and not having a multi-story building, so...
Well, if I might answer that, again, if you would take a, a greater look at the landscape that we're providing, which are not just putting in fir trees, these are...
Oh, I, I understand that.
Okay.
I do understand that.
But those, those themselves will block out.
I understand that, but...
Then, I guess I'm missing the point. If it's blocking it out, then...
Well, you know, there, there's still going to be, there's still going to be, you know, there's balconies that people are going to still be, you know, doors open, noise can potentially travel out of those, those units that are up in the air. I mean, I live a block off of Woodward Avenue, and when my windows are open, I can hear the train going through Royal Oak. Noise does travel, and elevated noise travels even, just as much.
Now, I, I won't, I can't fully minimize what you're saying, but I think that we've done, we're doing everything possible physically to avoid that.
I, I see that. I absolutely see that, but I still think...
And I can tell you in a nutshell, it's a must for us to have...
Oh, I understand that.
...this density.
I understand that.
Uh, what we've been asked to do to relocate again, to take an entire floor and relocate it, which we weren't able to take, all of the units with it, is not something that I want to try to debate with you monetarily, but we are trying to do everything we can to install a high-quality product within this community that we believe very firmly will benefit this community and the residents. Yes, there will be some adjustment, but overall, this is not going to be bad. We stand by it. This will not be bad for the residents. We are doing everything we possibly can to buffer them, to protect them from every element, and, uh, I don't know what we've missed, if anything.
Okay. Do we have any more comments or...
You know, I've been looking at this project for a long time, and, um, we've made some gigantic steps forward with it. I think this can be an asset to the city when I look at what was there originally with the school and a thousand students in there, five days a week for roughly eight months of the year, every day for five days, and we're looking now at bringing it down to about 200 or so people living there 24/7. Um, I think that's, speaks for itself. Now, I realize the density of the buildings have increased, increased on the area. I've looked at the parking. I have spent, I don't know how many days looking at the parking, and I've come to the conclusion that I think your parking is pretty good. I don't see a problem with, in reality. I see a little bit of spare parking left over, but I did count the 16 future spaces within that parking, and I think the 1.5 is a good number to use for the single, for the, for the, most of the apartments in the building, single room and studio apartments. For the lofts, you used 1.25, but I drove that number up to 1.5. Um, and what I came up with is that, given everything, when we build it, the church, everything, we would have potentially 11 empty spaces on the property, but using the 1.5, I think there will be a considerable number of only one car per apartment. So, I see probably on average at least 25 to 30 spaces empty in that whole project on a daily basis. Now, saying that, comes Christmas, comes Easter, and we have a horse of a slightly different color, but even so, I believe that there's, pretty much, we'll be able to accommodate all of the necessary auto traffic on it. Um, I had several questions that I came up with, and I have to go to Joe at this point, Nowitzki, if I could for a minute. Couple of things that I've noticed within the buildings as I went through it this last time. Um, let me be brief. Um, elevators, you're going to need an elevator machine room for your elevators in the new building. I don't know where you're, unless you're going to go to the new traction type that says no. I don't know where all of that, how you're fitting all of that in along...
In what building? What building? The new building?
The new building.
The new building, the elevator equipment room is on the first floor on each side. There's two of them.
That's Mark Utility or whatever it is.
Yes, yes. Those are actual physical realities that we did the research on, installed them graphically to scale. They're there.
Then, my next question is, you're going to have to bring in electrical, communications and all that, and how and where and, I don't see any distribution on any of the floors.
At each corner on the... At each corner, on the interior corner. Interior corners on a U-shape are pretty dead. We had to use them for the staircases and utility. Every floor has two of them.
Okay.
On each corner.
All right.
By the stairs.
By the stairs.
Yes, yes, sir.
I didn't see them, but.
They're there.
Okay. What about elevator overshoot when you go to the school building?
We, right next to the existing main entry off of Coolidge.
Yep. I know where the elevator is, but I assume the code requires, I believe, an overshoot on your elevator.
That's part of the reason we had to raise the roof. If you remember our very first image, it had a, it had a raised doghouse at the entry for that very reason. And now it's swallowed into the first floor because the loft is within that volume. So, it doesn't have to protrude above that.
Okay. Then, what about the new building? Because it doesn't, you don't show any elevator overshoots on the roof.
That's a problem, Dave. You're right.
Yep.
Now, let's talk about that for a second.
I don't know what the height is anymore.
We have, I know. We tried to minimize it.
Yes, I know. Everybody does.
So, the worst-case scenario, we need 13 feet.
Yep.
So, it might be a three-foot bump. And when I first did that building, that's exactly what the doghouse was for.
Yeah, okay.
We need six and seven. We can accommodate it with a very slight, oh, there's a good parapet. It may be a foot higher than that parapet because of the cedum. The cedum is a very thick assembly.
Yeah, no, I didn't see it on the roof plan when I worked with.
I might be able to accommodate it without being seen.
I don't know. I thought.
You're right. You're right. I missed it. I was so happy to get rid of it.
Yeah.
I didn't want to. I didn't want.
I didn't know whether you guys were changing the elevators to traction. There's a new traction elevator that requires no equipment.
I know, and/or pits, and/or wells. The problem, you still need the, you still need the crush zone.
Well, you do, yeah. You need to have the, you have to have the overshoot. That's always required.
Yeah.
Okay, we talked about the utilities. Okay. I didn't know whether you had maintenance on all floors of the buildings for.
Yes, sir.
Maintaining the corridors and what have you. I think there are utilities, janitor closets, but I'm not sure in the school. The one floor didn't have, I didn't see anything on the one floor.
On the school building?
Yeah.
Oh, it's full of them.
Second floor.
Oh, it's full of them right now. We're not taking them apart. They're cinder block walls.
Yeah, I know you're not.
Right.
Okay. That's all I have.
Additional questions from the council? Mr. Martin Smith?
Thank you. I listened to Mr. Dean Smith talk about his particular block. So, I did some quick calculations on my block. Mine's smaller. We have 15 houses, not 54. It's easier to add up as I was doing here. I'll tell you, my block, there's 38 cars and 15 homes. That's over two and a half per. And if I think about the blocks, I live in a different neighborhood, but if you think about the blocks of south and north of us, well, you have to pretty much go west. Can't go east. There's a lot of cars in most driveways. So, I'm, you know, we're looking at two and a half. I'm still not convinced that one and a half is the right number. I, you know, the ordinances around here, right or wrong, most of them say two. There's some less, some more. But I start thinking about my neighborhood, there's a whole lot more cars than what you experienced in your neighborhood. And like I said, about two and a half. Now, several of those are hobby cars. They only come out at certain times of the year, but still, we're well over two per. So, the parking count on this site is still a big bugaboo to me and that's a technical term. And I'm not, I, I just don't think you have enough parking. I, I'll just say it very simply. At 1.4 or 1.5 units per, or spaces per unit. And I don't see a transformers. I don't see a generator. You have a generator for this building?
No.
No generator, no emergency power?
We don't plan on it at this point.
Okay. I don't see any transformers, so you're gonna start losing some more spots. Eh, it's a spot or two, but they had a.
Well, actually, we have, we have an interior building off of the south side of the building. They can house that.
A generator? I mean, I meant the transformers going inside?
No, not the transformers.
Oh, I wouldn't think so. Okay. Are these the only dumpster locations you're using?
At this one.
They're attached? Okay.
If I might, though, interject you about the parking.
If I might interject you about the parking. There is, yes, we did establish this at 1.5. However, I just want to remind you that at the last public hearing, the, as, in fact, just to back it up a fraction further, what we were trying to base it around was the church's peak use and what we felt that we needed in our experience for our project. And yes, it was tighter and we were still meeting code, I'm sorry, our interpretation of code, the recommendations by, by every agency right now at 1.5. But regardless, the church had come out and said that if it is a problem, come Christmas mass, Easter mass, they will add another mass. That makes the whole problem go away and we are over, every day of the year, over 2.0. I think we're approximately 2.2. Again, I also have to say one other thing. We're probably a lot more sensitive to this than you are. This is our business and we can't afford to make mistakes.
You are not gonna set yourselves up to fail. I realize that.
No. No, this was, this was very, very carefully studied. And again, in the discussion between the Smith brothers here relative to the makeup of the, our apartment residency, there will be people who don't even have cars. There's gonna be, we assume to be about a third to be active seniors or above. We assume a fair amount to be young professionals who aren't gonna move around too much. They're gonna work out of their, out of their apartments. And certainly, there'll be the Beaumont Hospital employees who don't get up and go as often because they got some pretty long working hours.
Do, and I have a few things here. For the architect. Are you really gonna be able to build this building with 12-inch floor plates and a roof plate? I guess, I just want to put it this way. Are you folks gonna come back and say, "We need a building that's four foot taller"?
No.
You are going to build your cedum roof, the structure and everything in 12 inches?
Here's, here, I just met with the structural engineers this week. This is, every single wall in that building is a bearing wall.
Understand.
We need very thin floors. We're building the floors up just thick enough to insulate them. These are, every wall in that place is a bearing wall. It's a wood frame.
Where's the duct going?
Type 5. It's all stacked. It's all stacked. We'll have.
Okay, I, I, I'm just asking, I'm just saying, you don't come back asking for two, three, four more feet.
Yes, sir.
Because I, I don't, I don't, I do a lot of these buildings and I don't, I've never seen anybody build something with a 12-inch floor plate.
See, that, you don't know me yet.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Especially with the cedum roof on top, because that is a thick.
It's eight inches. It's eight inches.
Plus structure.
I know.
Plus decking.
I know.
It's gonna be heavy.
Plus insulation.
They've been watching.
You can. Our structural engineers, Bill Veltre.
No, no, no. Supported by the outside framing.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Has the city engineer, and the right term is not signed off, but I'm gonna use that term. Obviously, you don't have engineering drawings yet. Okay, that's, that's fine.
Right.
At this point.
It's a math problem. We can solve it. We can solve it.
Do we have the sanitary and storm capacities, which is really the same thing, in this neighborhood to support this project?
Yes.
I agree with you. Okay. Has the city attorneys agreed or has the city attorneys reviewed and agreed with the PUD agreement at this point? Do they, do we have their review?
The PUD agreement was reviewed prior to, two meetings ago with only one item that was, needed to be noted. There was an 18-month lead time for development. That needs to be a year to comply with the city ordinance, but there are still some additional sections that would need to be filled out before this goes to a final approval. In its current draft, it was generally found to be without issue. Yeah.
What about the joint parking agreement? The whole thing with several, I mean, you have a couple of different properties here and what do they say about that?
Wait a gen, we actually had two of our citizens' correspondents question that item and I forwarded it to our attorney. He needs to get us an answer before it goes to city council for approval. Generally, if we're talking about the same space, the, yes. I would also like to get equalization who handles our assessing to weigh in on the non-taxable status of the parcel once it falls under a restrictive use agreement, that, especially to accommodate a for-profit enterprise. That will most likely end up being a taxable parcel, but I need to get absolute confirmation for you on that before, well, either you or city council, depending on when that comes, so. Those items will be forthcoming, but we will definitely have answers on those prior to. The, under the current use, it does list all parties involved in this parcel. And again, except for our city attorney's review, who did not find that was an issue, so. I am aware of the language in the ordinance and I, like I said, did question him on that because one of the standards speaks to that specifically and we want to make sure that we're in conjunction with that.
Okay. As you, as you folks know, I, I wrote a letter two months ago. We had that very long meeting and there was a lot of things I didn't get to say. The chairman cut me off, but that's okay. I say, I say a lot of things.
This is the chair at the time, but the chair.
The other chairman, the previous chairman.
But this chair might do the same thing.
So, I wrote a letter. I wrote a, a, a letter with a lot of, I'm not even listening. No. I wrote a letter with a whole lot of bullet points and some of them picked up, some aren't, but I just wanted to make sure that it is part of the record. I think it was passed out to everybody.
Everybody got a copy of it.
Yes.
Beautiful, including the applicant.
And I might say that when we were referring to the comments made by commission, a lot of those comments were yours. We tried to directly answer, I mean, this, the, we took, we took it straight to heart, your suggestions about the facade, about the, the level of the building and so on. And overnight, we created a new vision over there. I mean, that, and in hindsight, we thank you for it.
Thank you. So, you know, I, at that time, was not real thrilled with the bulk and the design of the buildings.
Yes, and that's why we modified.
Okay. And I'm still not.
Because you.
Okay. I mean, it is what it is. We're here.
Yes.
Okay. Just so everybody knows. All that being said, I'm thrilled that you're retaining the existing building. A lot of people say it's not historical. Well, okay, it's not in the register and that's probably a good thing. It's not listed, but it has a lot of history for residents. We've lived here and non-residents who may have, you know, may have tended the school over the years. You've come a long way. I still have two big bugaboos. I'm not too worried about traffic. I think that's been resolved. There are gonna be people who buck the system. So, but I think, I think they're making an effort to address that. But I'm still not convinced of the parking and, and I'm still not thrilled with the aesthetics of the building. So, but I think you've come a long way and I commend you for that.
Thank you.
Let me see if I had anything else here, because I make a lot of notes as I go. Okay, I'll, I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'm going to open it to public comments. Again, please state your name and your address. Please keep your comments brief and if your comments have been made prior, please let the next person go, so.
How's it going? Kurt Height, 3525 Robina. I just wanted to say, you know, I am disappointed here. Some of you now go back on going from being extremely concerned about the parking to now being kinda okay with it and kinda being okay with the 1.5. I really think that, you know, for this to go through, that we really need to hold them to two spots per unit because that is where our city code has and that is where the area around here has. Basically, because even if some people only use one or some people use none, a lot of times you gotta account for visitors. You gotta account for, you know, just different, different things that might come up. And sometimes that, having two per unit, even though you're not using those all the time for parking, it kinda gives you a little bit of leeway, you know. Also, if there is adequate parking, you would not need to come in right away and already have. You're gonna be towed away if you park your signs. That's, that's a big warning sign. That is something that happens when things, things are happening out of control where they're trying to address a parking issue later on where, where somebody didn't see that there was gonna be an issue and they under, you know, they undervalue how much parking they were gonna need. So, so right away, when you're already talking that you're gonna have signs up there, people are gonna be towed. You already know that what's gonna happen because people are gonna be pulling in this parking lot and they're gonna be, then they know they're gonna live all the way in that parking building over there and they're gonna say, "Well, do I wanna park in this front spot over here? Do I wanna park in this, this spot that says reserve for the church? That's only used tomorrow and this is Saturday, so nobody's using that spot." They're gonna park in the closest spot available. If there's a visitor that comes to visit their apartment building, they're gonna park in the closest spot available. They're not gonna care if it says church reserved parking, okay? So, to start saying, you know, "I'm okay if you go down to 1.5," I think that's ridiculous. So, I created a graph, a poster board here that basically was based off of two parking spots per unit. And I really have a real problem here and when they say, "Oh, we have 30 spots left over or we have 16 spots left over," when you take away the 16 in the green area or whatever. Because again, you're not leaving very much margin for error at all. I mean, you have, you have, you know, you have Christmas at the, at the church. You add a couple of masks, but what happens when the apartments, you know, you have 20 or so residents that decide they wanna have a Christmas party in their new, in their new dwelling. There's no parking available. And, and that's why I say the issue, you know, parking's gonna be an issue, so.
He gave me two.
Okay, so basically, I'm looking here and I'm not dictating where exactly people are gonna park. I'm just showing basically the apartment building being the biggest use of the area and the most permanent use of the area. It's gonna be first come, first served. And I say, even though the blue cars represent the 185 that the developer says that he should be required to have based on his interpretation of the code, which is a new one to me because I thought the city is the one that dictates the interpretation of the code. But, so they have 185 blue cars, which is represented on the map. It should be a concern that they only have 50%, just over 50% dedicated parking for this apartment building at, what is it, 130 out of the 260 that they should be required to have. Then, the yellow cars are represented by the additional that is required by our code, which will bring it up to 260 for this area, which only leaves five spots left for the church. Now, when you get down to the church, the new lot, you have 12 that is a permanent use, which is a convent. Leftover is 84 spots for church parking. That leaves, and if you include the, Lauren, you know, Smith said 170. I said 143 the developer had. But if you say 170 cars, that leaves you with an additional, almost 80 cars that you don't have parking spots for on a, on a, on a 170-car use for the church. That doesn't even include the 187 spots additional that some say that our city code requires that a church of this size has 330 spots. Okay, I can understand. Maybe they don't use that much and maybe you know one of the standards. If you go down to like even 250, I understand, they say they have 250 spots available before they give it away on a shared use. That's great. I think that's adequate. But if somebody was building a church of that size today, they would not be able to say, you know, "I have, I'm building a church of this size." I'm building a church of this size, but I have a hundred and se- a hundred and seventy spots. Can I get approved? No, you would say, no, you don't have adequate parking. This is a real problem that i- i- is gonna be created. If you think the center is bad, this is much worse. Because you can already see that there is no margin for error and there are no parking areas available for visitors when the church is in use. And, and that's a problem. I, please do not approve this based on one point five parking. We knew from the beginning that they could not come close to two parking spots per unit. If the parking was abundant and it wasn't a problem, they would not need towed away signs. They would not need, um, a- a- as, as big of a shared use. They would not have basically both the church and the apartment having just over fifty or sixty percent of dedicated parking with a big, with an area that, that shares every, it was a catch-all. That's, that's not adequate to even cover the parking for both sites. I mean, I think somebody said four hundred or so parking that would be required. No, I mean, it's like, you're talking about, if you add up the two hundred and sixty plus the, you know, the hundred and, uh, hundred and sixty of, of the, a hundred and seventy of the church, you know, that's, that's four hundred and thirty, four hundred and fifty. You know, they don't have it. It's not there. So, you know, please, just, if you guys, I'm, I'm gonna be really disappointed if you guys go down to, to some suggestion of saying one point five is adequate. Because we know the problems that the center has been trying to, to, to fix and this is flirting with disaster. And, and, and just a, uh, one more, a couple of other little things that I wanted to point out. The church, after this is agreed upon, and this happens, the church is now landlocked, okay? If attendance was an issue before, how would they address it after? No additional parking for increase in church attendance equals continued low attendance. And that could still lead to the church closure. So, people say that this is gonna save the church, but I say, if the lower attendance was an issue, it's gonna continue to be low and there's no way to change it after this is locked in. There's no more parking. You, people are not gonna start attending their church where they can't find a parking spot on Sunday. And, and the other thing is, you know, when they count the bike, bicycle racks for, for, as credit for parking, they don't make a good spot to hold cars. That doesn't really carry over for when you have a visitor, oh, park in the bike, bike rack.
Mr. Height, I did, I did ask you to keep your comments brief and we've gone on now for some time, but I, I think your point has been made. I appreciate it. Next, please. Name and address.
Hi, Lisa Kempner, Columbia and Berkeley. So, based on the email that I got in the packet from Marty Smith, um, he mentioned the density of not being particularly different. So I thought, huh, okay, that's interesting. So I started looking through the plans. What I noticed is that, um, they're really sloppy. So, um, unit E three is listed as a studio. The plans show an entirely different floor plan. It's actually the left half of E two. Unit E four is listed as a studio. The plans state and actually show a one-bedroom. Um, E four and E five, E six and E seven are transposed. E seven, um, is actually, E six is also labeled as a studio, but has a clear bedroom with a closet. A number of ones were labeled studios and when you look at them, they have a clear bedroom and a clear closet. Couple even had doors. One had a little squiggly line. I'm guessing that's a folding door, but just because you decided to not put a door on it, doesn't make it a studio. Actually, there's only eleven legitimate studios in the whole thing. And then you look at the totals, it lists in one place that there's twenty-three studios and another place there's twenty-two. In the parking analysis, between version two and version three, they took off five spots. It didn't get translated into their parking analysis. So, there's a lot of sloppy work that doesn't give us the exact numbers. If you look at the exact numbers going by their ratios of parking, um, you are like two over. There's no wiggle room and I think that those are probably low to begin with. Those are, some of those one-bedrooms are really, really big. They're easily gonna hold two people, two cars. But I, I think it's important to look at the work. Because you, you all requested, um, a rendering from ground zero a number of meetings ago. That never showed up. If this is the type of work they're going to do, then we as a community start to get rea- as neighbors, start to get really worried as how this construction process is going to happen. What's going to change and just be neglected and hope nobody catches it? Because the studios have gone on with nobody going, hey, wait, that's not an actual studio. It, it's sloppy work and if it's sloppy work here, it's probably gonna be sloppy work in real life.
Thank you.
My name is Sudegal. I live at three eight oh one Tyler. My husband and I moved here in January of nineteen seventy-seven with our two preschool children. We had spent months trying to find a place for our first house and were thrilled when we found Berkeley. It was affordable housing, a wonderful community. We especially liked the fact that the high educational standards here. And that next summer, I counted on our block forty-three children from babies to high school students. But times change. This year, there are five children on my block. Things do change, but Berkeley is still a wonderful town. We love it because of its small-town flavor. The twelve-mile and Coolidge corridors for business. And we would love to stay here. But it's forty years later, um, our kids are grown and gone and taking care of the house and the yard have become a, a bit for us. We're both in our seventies. We would like to downsize. We'd like something that's one floor. We'd like something where we don't have to do all the outside work. We're looking for an apartment or something along those natures. We're not ready to move into a one-bedroom senior building over at Oxford yet. But we need something smaller than what we have and Berkeley doesn't really have very many options for us. We need some apartments where we could have, continue to live in the community that we love, but not have all the responsibilities that we have where we are now. And when I look at the people on my block, most of them are young married people with two or no children. Um, we have a lot of single people. We have, uh, people, married, young married couples. They could also have liked to do something in the way of an, you know, an apartment is a nice way to start. So, you know, other than taking a playground somewhere, a community where there are parks and making it into a place for apartments, there really isn't another place in Berkeley where we could build an apartment building that has more than eight units in it. So I hope you will consider the needs of the community to expand the type of housing that's available here to serve other types of people besides the traditional, you know, family. We, we need something for seniors, something for single people, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Susan Citroro, two eight two seven, Sunny Knoll. I would like to talk about the-
Can you put the mic down a little bit?
I'd like to talk about the traffic patterns that were discussed. One of the requirements of the PUD is that the proposal shall not result in an unreasonable increase in the need for or burden upon the public services facility, streets and utilities of the community. I have a problem with the developers' comments about using public safety as a mechanism to control the traffic patterns. I believe that would cause an undue burden on our community and for public safety. And because of that, one of the reasons I think this PUD should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Eric Wheeler, twenty-six, seventy-nine, Oxford. Um, in short, I just think it's a bad plan. It, it's oversized for the parcel. It does not fit in with the character of the neighborhood or the street. And frankly, I think facing it with townhouses is just silly. I could not imagine wanting to live there. However, they dress it up by, you know, putting picnic tables out on the lawn. It's, it's just not a good presentation, uh, for that type of area. One question I have among many is, um, see, I'm in the house just to the west of the development. Um, I know they're planning to install trees and landscaping there to soften the view and try to buffer the light and the noise. I'm skeptical of that because trees have a way of doing what they wanna do, not what we tell them to do. But, um, there, there's a fence that borders my lot and the parking lot and I assume it's owned by the church. Um, and I assume that it will probably be removed or redressed in some sort of way when the construction starts. So what's not shown there adjacent to my driveway and along the border are four trees, which are decades old and are very tall. And you've probably heard studies that trees enhance the value of a property. If those trees are stressed, damaged, or killed by this construction project, who's gonna be responsible for that? You know, that, that's something that is not being addressed here. I believe it was Mr. Murad who talked about all of the balconies. There are a number of those facing west. And to the west of that is, is my bedroom. There would be two bedrooms if I had someone upstairs. That's, once again, a lot of noise. I don't believe that the light can be controlled to the degree that people can say that I'm not going to notice, that it's not gonna be any different from what the illumination is from the school right now, which is quite a, a distance away. So there, there's a big difference there. People have covered a lot of them. The, the last point I'll, I'll speak on is the benefit to the school district. And, you know, property tax is one thing, but what the schools really need is enrollment. And if these are geared toward single people, that does not increase the enrollment in the school. One more point, which is that, um, the parking, once again, is not inadequate. A lot of people have multiple vehicles for various reasons. On my street, like Mr. Martin Smith's street, um, there are a number of households that have four cars in use, because some people have work trucks. Some people have company cars in addition to their personal cars. And so unless, you know, there's something specifying that the type of people who reside there cannot be tradespeople or cannot be professionals who bring home a company car, then there's no control over how many cars a, a unit is going to have. Thank you.
Hello, Dennis Henon, Berkeley. Um, I just wanna address-
Your address, please? Your address, street address?
Two four one one, Irwin.
Thank you.
A few things. On the traffic study, uh, in the public documents that came out, the public didn't get the HRC analysis, so we're at a bit of a disadvantage. We didn't get to see that. The model, uh, is based on, for the traffic analysis, based on the assumption on the type of units. And as we heard Ms. Kempner say, that, uh, those numbers seem to be flawed on, you know, the sizes of units and potentially the number of people living in each. Some of the pretty renderings we saw showed leaves on the trees that would be hiding the buildings. Where we live in Michigan, and a good part of the year, there are no leaves on the trees. So, we would be, you know, missing that shielding. Then, for a PUD, the city is giving a lot here and they need to get a lot in return. There needs to be benefits, I'm coming back to the benefits. There needs to be benefits that the city gets that we could not get otherwise. And I think there are other things that could go in this spot that give us benefits that don't require us to have to bend over so many rules, go through so many contortions with so many series of, um, it just made a mockery of the one-ownership thing that PUDs are supposed to have. The series of presentations that had to come before you today to get to this point. I wanna see development here. Uh, I wanna see apartments here, but I wanna see responsible development and this is not responsible development.
My name, my name is Jim Phillips, nineteen thirty-six, Beverly. You know, there's one thing that we, I think we need to keep in mind, and that is that the owner of this property is gonna sell it. We're not talking about, well, if you don't sell it, uh, we'll just let it sit there. This property is no longer being used as the owner originally intended. The owner's a bishop and somewhere along the line, he's gonna sell it. What I see in this proposal does wonderful things for the kinds of things we need in Berkeley. It's a classy-looking thing. It has, uh, opportunity for old people to, to live if they wanna stay in Burke, in Berkeley. It's got room for young people to move in. We reject this and we might spend the next three years wishing we had taken this one because nothing else turned out to be anywhere near as good. I think that's important to keep in mind.
Thank you. More comments?
Joshua Hunter, two two four zero, Thomas. My, my comments are regarding the sixty-six-unit four-story apartment complex facing Oxford. And it seems to be really unprecedented, at least in the Woodward corridor. It's on a, it's on a residential street, Oxford. It's, it's, it's in the, it's basically in the middle of the block. It's facing the street. And I'm not aware of anywhere in the Woodward corridor where there's a four-story apartment complex on a residential street like this, especially one that's right next to another sixty-unit apartment. So I, I don't even know if there's one in Oakland County. I'd like to know so we can see an example of how, how that type of development works. But otherwise, it seems not just unprecedented, unprecedented for Berkeley, but for, uh, in Oakland County. So I, I don't see how this meets the master plan objectives. The, this building needs to complement and be transitional and it, it, a four-story apartment just simply doesn't do that. I think the benefits could be made under, uh, conventional zoning. These are just apartment buildings. There's no mixed uses, no public access or public, uh, plazas. There's an apartment right across the street on Oxford, Metropolitan Oxford. I believe that's conventionally zoned and that, that follows all the, I believe that follows all the setback requirements. I, I don't know if there's any variances, but it looks like there's adequate parking. It's only a, I believe it's only a twenty or twenty-so unit apartment. And that's conventionally zoned, but here we have a, a much larger building and the reason we're being told why the, a smaller scale can't be done is because of the financial condition of the project. Well, that, the financial condition of the project isn't a, a reason of public benefit. It's, that's on the, um, that's something that developer needs to address. But that, that has nothing to do with the, uh, with the city and the surrounding area. I also like to comment on the, regarding the shared parking. And it's ma- my, my main issue with it is, um, in addition to the, uh, previous comments, is how, uh, separate it is from the, the, the rest of the buildings. And my concern with that is that's gonna put an undue burden on the surrounding businesses and the streets on Oxford when visitors arrive. I, I, I could see a scenario with that where people would rather park across the street at the new wedding shop instead of all the way in the corner, um, when they're visiting. I think that puts an undue burden. Yes, they could tow away, but now you're putting that burden on the, uh, the surrounding residents or the surrounding, uh, property owners and residents. So I, I, I think this should be denied. I, I, there's been talk about senior housing. I, I don't see why, if this isn't denied, why couldn't this one building be entirely senior housing then? That would be in completely different use and much less intense use. So my, my main concern is the intensity of the use and it's, it's not congruent with the master plan and the goals and, and I think it should be rejected. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Linda Gable Smith, nineteen twenty-seven Elwood. I just want to remind the viewing public that just because someone speaks at the city council and planning meeting doesn't mean that they're giving correct information. There's a lot of bad information, a lot of facts aren't being checked that are, for things that are being said. Some people say they want a mixed-use project, something with retail, office, and apartments. This would bring a lot more traffic because you would have workers, customers, and residents, and you'd also have to deal with delivery trucks. So that really doesn't make a lot of sense. The suggestion that homes that can be converted into single-family living in Berkeley, this was at the last meeting, doesn't always work if someone has a colonial home with just a living room, dining room, and kitchen. So that leaves no place for our seniors to go. The new bridal shop across the street was very concerned about the parking at the last meeting. She should be thrilled with a proposal of a complex that's going to bring in single professional people that may be getting married, and they might just walk right across the street to her business and give her some money. Or they might even be smarter and walk down to the corner and walk across the street so they're safe. The issue about lights shining into the house just west of the complex, the apartment building will not be next to his house. That's where the condos and townhomes, slash townhomes, whatever you want to call them, will be, which would be the same as having a single-family home next door to him. That was the whole issue with putting the building in the back. There'll be the borders and fence and the trees which will block out some of that. This is not a development in the middle of a neighborhood. It has two residential sides, across the street and to the west. The rest of it is on a main road. Some people think this project doesn't fit into the Berkeley bedroom community. I personally do not think that those big box houses that they're building fit into this community, but obviously, a lot of people do because they're paying three hundred and four hundred thousand dollars to buy them. Everyone has an opinion about that. They can all be different, but what is best for this community and its growth and retention of its senior citizens is what should prevail at the time. This newspaper article that was written in the July twelfth issue, I'm not sure if the reporter was at that June meeting, but this article is very one-sided. It made no mention of any of the support for this project. I think this is a great project. I think it will bring wonderful things to this community. It will retain people that can, you know, have nowhere else to go. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Rachel Spiewak. I live at eighteen twelve Edgewood. I was at the June meeting. It was a very long meeting. It gave me a great appreciation for this board and how serious they take, you know, the facts involved, and that you're really looking out for the best interests of the citizens of Berkeley. So I do want to say that I appreciate that. I would like to say to some of the comments earlier today that I do think that we have to have a dose of reality. And reality is, you know, maybe Charleston, South Carolina should have a hockey team, but it's never going to have a hockey team. So we have an opportunity with an excellent developer to improve the sewer and water in that area that is the old school and parking lot. We have a developer that has worked well with the board to make changes to meet the needs of the Berkeley citizens per your request, and they're going to put wonderful landscaping in, and it's going to bring more people to our community, which will be, you know, eating at our restaurants, shopping at our shops, living in and working in our community, which I think is a wonderful idea, and I think it's definitely going to enhance the community. You know, one of the things that I've been hearing tonight about the parking and the traffic, right, is that we live in a city. We all chose to live here. We do not live in Lapeer. We do not live in, you know, Milford, you know, way out where there's new subdivisions. And so we have a lot of city blocks, right? The fact of the matter is, I live on Edgewood, and depending on whether I'm going to PNC Bank or someplace else, I might be going down Beverly, I might be going down Mortenson, I might be going down Edgewood. I have a choice. I live in a city. I go down blocks. So the fact of the matter is, even if we have new citizens here, which I hope we do, right, and we try and enhance the traffic patterns, you know, people are going to go where they want to go, right? If they want to go to downtown Berkeley, they might not go out onto Coolidge. They might go down Kipling, but they're another neighbor. And that's what my neighbors do. They choose the streets that they go down based on where they're going within the city. People who live out in McComb have these huge subdivisions and hundreds of homes, and they have two outlets from their subdivision to get on North Avenue. It's not really a good design either. So for a city with houses where people are literally twelve feet apart from each other, we have to understand that there's going to be traffic, and it's okay because they're our neighbors. In addition to that, I believe that, you know, we have street parking rules. So from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, no one's allowed to park on the streets. So when people have parties, when people have Woodward cruises, when people have occasions, they will be parking on the streets, and they will be parking in front of your home and everybody else's home. I had plenty of people parking by my house for Woodward cruise. I'm on the corner of Mortenson and Edgewood. So I do think that parking restrictions from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM will help. So people will not be parking in front of your house overnight, but they may be parking there. And we would hope one day, maybe, that our churches have more people attend them, all of our churches across town. I know Shrine of the Little Flower has probably seven weekend masses, and everybody parks on Twelve Mile, and some of the neighbors, you know, neighborhoods there, they're parking in the street to go to church. And if that happens for La Sallette, so be it. It's probably a good thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Fred McDonald, and I live at one seven two four Beverly Boulevard for over forty-three years. My wife and I have raised three kids in Berkeley, two of which are graduates of Berkeley High School. And we're proud to live in Berkeley, which has prided itself, and rightly so, on being a welcoming community. And I think this, what I've heard, I haven't been following it all that closely, but what I've heard, I think this project is a welcome addition to Berkeley. And my wife and I and my oldest son hope things can be worked out and ask that you approve the proposed sale so we can continue to have the opportunity to attend La Sallette Church. I think it's important to note that La Sallette has served the Berkeley community for over ninety years, not only spiritually, but also in material ways, by helping needy families in various ways, shelter to provide the homeless, food, help with utilities, and other bills. Thank you.
Any more comments? Okay. We have, what is the desire of the planning commission? We don't typically allow that at this point.
There are a couple of things that were incorrect, and I'd just like to straighten those out if you wouldn't mind.
I, this is public, we-
Wait.
No, I'm sorry. Let us talk. We, I think your points were made earlier. The public, the documents that are in the record, we'll clear them up, and there's never a hundred percent view of the beach ball in these things. So what is the desire of the commission? Yes.
You know, listening to everything tonight and the public comments, my notes are too big for me to comprehend. The, a really neat mix of views. Let me go through a couple of things real quick. Recognizable benefits. We have, or the project has to meet four of seven conditions. You've got a high-quality design. Well, the other, Mr. Smith, might take exception. I think the design gets better each time they go through it. Last iteration, anyway, I'll go fast. Extensive landscaping, I don't see that. Preservation of historic resource, doesn't have to be on the registered deeds, but La Sallette is a building that is a landmark to those of us from the area. Efficient consolidation of a poorly-designed parcel. This is ideal for that. You've got office zoning, you've got multiple, it's on a major thoroughfare, put them together, make something work out of it. And the residential, as has been stated, is way less intensive than commercial. Shared vehicular access. Why would Berkeley put that in our ordinance if it wasn't important? So here's an opportunity where something would be developed, and they would make better utilization of parking areas. Pave less, park more. And variety of housing types. You know, rentals are rentals, but studios and one-bedrooms, you know, those are a variety. We've got a traffic study that says minimal impact. We have tools to help shape people's behaviors. Infrastructure benefits, you've got the looping of a water main, correction of storm runoff. There's a lot of benefits to this project. Is it perfect? No. Is it potentially a catalyst? Yes. I could go on and read you four pages of notes, but I think you're telling me to be quiet.
I'm, well, I'm not telling you to be quiet. I'm telling you to be efficient.
Same.
In this late hour, what is the, what is the desire of the planning commission?
Madam Chair, our choices are to make a motion to recommend approval or to make a motion to disapprove. Either way, this goes to the council, is that right?
Yes.
The council has final say.
If we disapprove it, we're killing it.
No, you, any of the councils are recommending, the commissions are recommending body on this item. As indicated, the recommendation would have to go to council, whether it's affirmative or negative.
Yes, this is a finding of thought here. I guess technically.
Recommend to deny.
We recommend to approve or we recommend to deny. So is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Since I already said a whole bunch of stuff, I make a recommendation to approve PUD zero one dash one seven. Somewhere, I wrote a bunch of conditions, and I'll never find them in time, but with easement agreement is part of it, the whole package.
And that's part of the PUD.
And the, there is a recognizable benefit. There are community benefits. There could be more, there could be less. But my recommendation is to send the city council approval of PUD zero one dash one seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's Barnett, seconded. Discussion? Mr. Richardson?
Madam Chair. I don't think I personally have sat on a proposal of this magnitude, and it's, what we end up doing with that intersection is going to have a big impact on the community for years to come. I'm looking at our ordinance, and what the ordinance says that the city has to do, first us, then the city council, we have to find at least three of seven recognizable benefits. We have to make that finding. And we have to find that these benefits are related to the PUD, that without the PUD, we wouldn't have these benefits. So my approach has been to run through the seven benefits to see if we can come up, if I can come up with three. And my analysis, I think, is going to be a little different than Mr. Smith's. And I'm looking at, just for reference, section one thirty-eight, five thirty-three, one through seven. Number one, high-quality architectural design beyond site plan requirements. Well, I assume those would be the requirements that would pertain to ordinary multifamily zoning. I don't, I don't see that here. I don't see anything going beyond what might adhere to a proposal under ordinary multifamily zoning. I frankly, I'm not that crazy about the project design, I have to say. And I'll elaborate on that a little bit. Extensive landscaping beyond site plan requirements, I don't see that either. There are very few references to landscaping in the zoning code generally in the site, the site plan approval process that would pertain to approvals under ordinary zoning. So there's, it's hard to compare, but the use of this parcel is so intense that it doesn't leave a whole lot of room for landscaping. I mean, there just isn't much landscaping possible under the current design. Three, preservation or enhancement of historical resources, I think that's clearly a yes. I think preserving the school building is very desirable for the community, and I don't, that is one plus that I don't think you can get without a PUD because right now, it's owned office, and for it to be used as office space, it would, I think, preclude any development of the parking lot because you need that parking for the office. And I don't think that's an outcome that is particularly good for the community. So I think you do, I think that is a yes, and I think it is related to the PUD. It can't be obtained without it. Preservation of open spaces or public plaza, number four. I don't see this at all. In the original staff report, it notes that there's thirty-nine percent lot coverage, and that's with the school and the parking lot together. If you just take the portion that's currently zoned multifamily, and just look at that in isolation, the coverage exceeds fifty percent. It's fifty-four percent. The difference between thirty-nine and fifty-four, I think that's attributable to the curtilage around the school building, in particular, the front lawn. So we're not adding open space, and we're actually using more, leaving a much bigger footprint than we would under conventional zoning. Efficient consolidation of poorly-dimensioned parcels, I don't go along with that either. This is actually, requires parcel splits. This is splitting a parcel. It's going to split off the townhouses, and it's going to split the northern half from the remaining church property. So I don't see any consolidation going on here at all. Shared vehicular access between properties or uses, I think this is definitely a yes. You know, there is flow provided through the reciprocal easement agreement that, and it relates both to traffic and to parking. Complementary, seven, complementary mix of uses of variety of housing types, I don't see that here. This is a big apartment complex, essentially. It's got two buildings, and yes, it has some townhouses, but, you know, that's, maybe injects a little variety, but it's not the kind of thing we ordinarily think about pertaining to PUDs. So I think my, but I think the basis, the real nub of my objection is the intensity of the use connected to the apartment building. I, you know, I just, I think we, as a community, have to look at the benefits that we can expect to get out of a PUD, and they're listed right here, and they're, they're not- right here. And they're not present. We need a development there with more open space, with more community access, with more harmony between the adjacent neighborhood and development. In terms of externalities, burden on streets and utilities, I think that the utility issue has been resolved to my satisfaction. As far as burden on streets goes, anytime you move people in, there's gonna be increase in traffic. The real issue is, is it unreasonable or not? And the only intersection I can see there might be a problem is Oxford and Colledge. I think there could well be some backup issues there. But it's awful hard to prognosticate about something like that. I'm gonna give them a pass on that. Underground utilities, not a problem. I'm moving on, beyond recognizable benefit now to the other criteria. Consistent with public health, safety, and welfare. Aside from the aesthetic issue, I think the externalities are pretty much taken care of. My position on the parking is that it's adequate, barely adequate is my, pretty much sums up my feeling about it. You know, population trends and the demographics that they're expecting, I think, make a 1.5 ratio reasonable. Impact on, economic impact on surrounding properties. I think development in the community in that area will have a positive impact. So I'm not too worried about that. Single control of the project. Now, that's been mentioned several times here, but I think the reciprocal easement agreement takes care of that problem. I think essentially we do have single control due to that agreement. Consistent with goals and policies of the master plan. Well, we are looking for more density. We are in need of housing for seniors and others, apartment housing. We do have those needs. But that doesn't mean that this particular plan is the best plan to meet those needs. So, the heart of my objection really boils down to the intensity of the use connected with the apartment building. I'm just not comfortable with that. I'm not, it's a big box that's kinda dropped in the neighborhood. And the developer has told us he can't compromise anymore on units. I have to accept what he says, but that's also not really our problem. It's his problem, if I could be blunt about it. I just think we can do better in terms of getting more benefits for, in exchange for a PUD. And so I'm gonna have to reluctantly say that I'm not in favor of recommending approval.
Okay. We have additional comments?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Burnett?
I think I've been one of the people on this commission that's been very much in favor of bringing multifamily into this community. And there's parts of this project that I love, like the reorganization of the school building. I even like the townhomes on Oxford. But again, part of what Commissioner Richardson speaks about is that, that big box, that big box. I just have, I have problems with that. I, you know, I go back and forth on the parking, concerns about that. And I, like I said earlier, you're gonna have people, as much as you try, they're gonna leave this property and go down Oxford, make a left-hand turn or a right-hand turn on Harvard and go through the neighborhoods. Will it be traffic jams at Oxford and Kipling and Harvard and Kipling? Probably not, but it will increase the traffic through those neighborhoods. And, you know, and I've heard from people too, talking about, well, for it to be a PUD, it needs some mixed use. So I did a little bit of study on that. So if this building was split, or the school building, just the school building alone was split into three uses, say one-floor retail, one-floor office, one-floor residential, you'd need 244 parking spaces. Okay? With just 64 units going at, of just the school building, at two per, two cars per unit, that's 128. So that's nearly double of what you would need. If this building was all office, it was converted to all office, you'd need 195 spaces. So from a parking standpoint, this is the right use. But again, once you add that, that second apartment building, it, I think it starts pushing those numbers a little bit. I would like to see more of public space too, as you mentioned. So, so it's been, you know, it's been a tough decision, but I don't think I can support this right now.
Okay. Mr. Tengary?
Well, I'm glad I let Mr. Richardson and Mr. Murad talk first because I don't have to say as much. Because they covered a lot of what I was going to talk about, in particular, Mr. Richardson's analysis of the seven points. There are things I love about this project. There's, certainly in principle, the idea of multiple family in this location makes a lot of sense to me. If it was just the school building and the townhomes, I'd be on board, even though I don't particularly like the way the townhomes look. I've been kind of talking about lightening their appearance the entire time we've been doing this, but the developer has his preferred appearance for the townhomes, and I guess he's going with it. I wanted to seek some clarification from Mr. Baumgarten on something that was spoken about earlier, which is the shared parking agreement between a for-profit and nonprofit use. You said that there was a possibility, you didn't have a final answer on this yet, but there was a possibility that that would actually change the taxable status of the parcel on which the agreement occurs?
Yes. Staff's working assumption right now, and it needs to be confirmed with the equalization division, and we weren't able to do that before meetings tonight, is that yes, if the primary function of the parcel is to accommodate a private use, it can no longer be counted under non-taxable status.
Is that something that happens on a prorated basis, or is it the whole parcel? Do you have any idea?
I've not gotten into that detail yet, and I apologize for that.
Okay. That's just a question because it came up in some of the correspondence we received, and I was curious about it. But, okay, that's, it's an interesting question. Generally speaking, lag of open space and public access to the site was always one of my big concerns here. I mean, I know there's gonna be a little less impervious surface, but it's still not, still not public space. And, you know, the building height is a concern. And I think the access is just kind of, I mean, it's a real subjective word I'm about to use, but the access is just funky. I mean, I just, I'm looking at where you can go in and out of this site and trying to imagine consistently going down to that little driveway through the parking lot. And it just, I don't know, it just seems really inconvenient to me. And I don't know, the circulation on the site has never worked particularly well, in my opinion. And that's not changed. You know, as I say, there are things I love about the project, but there are also things that I don't like about it. And to Mr. Richardson's point, I think that the size of that second building really is the crux of the biscuit, as Frank Zappa might say.
Okay. Do you have any last comments?
I wanted to follow all of those up with my support for the motion. I do think it meets at least three of our recognizable benefits that are in the PUD ordinance, and I'm not gonna belabor them, but the architectural design, I do tend to like. The historic resource, we've already talked about, and it does provide a complementary mix of multiple family type uses. But something I think that's also important to point out is it complements the majority of single-family housing we have in the community. So it provides our community with a complementary mix of housing types that we don't really have. Okay.
Ms. Chairman?
Mr. Smith?
I'm on it right here.
You know, Berkeley desperately needs multifamily. We've been talking about, this board, commission has been talking about for years. And if there's a site in Berkeley that screams multifamily, it's a site. I mean, it's obvious. It's a no-brainer. I really wanna vote for this project tonight. This could be the right project. Some of the aspects of this project are wonderful, and I won't belabor what they are. But as you've all heard tonight, it's not there yet, in my opinion. So, I hope we get something here. But I don't think they are quite there yet.
I'd like to offer my opinion, since I've kind of held it most of the night on these items. And I'd like to address, without belaboring, the seven issues. You brought up the design, that it wasn't significantly interesting or architecturally interesting. Based on what we've approved over the past however many years I've been on this board for the unbuilt apartment complexes and the, you know, begging the contractor, or begging the developer to even, you know, change the glazing or get rid of the Hardy board or whatever they use, I'm not an architect. But this is architecturally much better than any of the other apartment units I have seen here, or even over in our neighboring communities. I think it is interesting, and I think it is, I think this, it's a little weird, I would agree, with the building in the middle, but it is, it will work on scale because of the existing school building. I disagree with the point on landscaping. This will be the first green roof in Berkeley, and it is a significant roof. And that is part of the landscaping. Landscaping is not just ground-level visual. This is functional landscaping, to the extent that it's going to eliminate the runoff from that building and, you know, also give, you know, all sorts of the good effects of lots of green things growing. It does preserve the school. Nope, it doesn't have open space, but it's not open space now. It's not public open space. This is private property, and we don't expect them to hand it over, particularly a valuable parcel like this. We have beautiful parks within walking distance. I do think it is a better use of the parcels, particularly the church parcels, because they're consolidating into their space better because they've moved with their parishioner size, that happens, but they're still maintaining the church and shrinking some of the ancillary uses of the thing. The shared vehicle access, yes. I, there was a point made by one of the audience, the public who spoke, was, these are our neighbors, or will be our neighbors. They're not customers coming in to buy something, or coming once or twice, or whatever. They're our neighbors. They're gonna treat it like their neighborhood. Now, some of our neighbors are not very respectful, but I have that on my street too, and I live on Edgewood as well. So yes, it becomes a racetrack during Woodward, you know, dream cruise. But for the most part, people are pretty respectful. I do think it is a complementary use, and there is different rental prices, different rental, you know, options, and there is townhouses. There really is no rental property, except for some very tired properties, which are fine for some of the people looking for them, but you wanna attract, you know, new and vibrant, and people then who will shop, and then people who will invest in 12 Mile and Coolidge and 11 Mile. There is great opportunity in Berkeley, but we're not going to realize it without bringing in new residents. And I, so, those are my points. And from that, I think we've all had a chance to speak, except the city manager.
I just-
Who speaks as our, as our planning engineer.
Right. I just wanted to reiterate standards for approval prior to the vote.
Okay, please do.
You read the pre-application standards. I wanna note, Section 138, 537, standards for approval. And my apologies, but there are seven items. So, first one being a recognizable and material benefit to the ultimate users of the project and of the community, where such benefit would otherwise be unfeasible or unlikely to be achieved without the application of the PUD regulations. The proposed type and density used shall not result in unreasonable increase in the need for or burden upon public services, facilities, streets, and utilities. There shall be underground installation of utilities, including electricity and telephone, unless otherwise approved by the city. The proposed development shall be consistent with public health, safety, and welfare of the city. The proposed development shall not result in the unreasonable negative impact upon surrounding properties. The proposed development shall be under single ownership or control, such that there is a single entity having responsibility for completing the project in conformity with this division. And the proposed development shall be consistent with the goals and policies of the master plan. This section does not call for a specific number to be hit. All need to be considered for approval. Many of the ones that were discussed earlier were the pre-application standards. I believe they get rolled into, number one, that the recognizable benefit not found in other places. But did wanna clarify that there are a separate set of standards for moving forward at this point than there were under the pre-application. And I'll note the zoning there is already multifamily. The school building is office space. So, just wanted to do my limp along as this de facto city planner for the moment.
Thank you. So, we have a motion on the floor. Let's take a vote.
Madam Chair?
No, no, you may not, actually. Mr.?
First of all?
No, I'm sorry. You do not have an opportunity to speak. We have a motion on the floor. We've had our discussion. You've had your presentation. I appreciate that. Unfortunately, you are, Robert's Rules of Order, do not have the floor. The floor is with the vote at the moment.
Ms. Chairman, do we have a second?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Burnett.
It's been a while. My apologies.
Where'd you want?
You wanted to know if we had a second.
Yes, I seconded it. Take the vote.
Take the vote.
Okay. All right. D. Smith?
Yes.
M. Smith?
No.
No.
Buckler?
Yes.
Kaplansky?
Yes.
Murad?
No.
Richardson?
No.
Burnett?
Yes.
The vote is 4-4. The motion failed to gain, failed to gain a majority of the commission. Therefore, did not pass. So?
No, the public comment section of the commission is, we don't, we didn't allow it last day.
What do we do next?
Next on the agenda, next on the, next on the agenda.
Well, Madam Chair, we do need some resolution here. The two other additional options available to the commission at this point would be a motion for, motion to recommend denial or a motion to postpone the vote.
I think we know what the result of a motion to deny would be.
It's gonna be the same.
Yeah, it's gonna be another 4-4 split.
Make a motion.
I can make the motion to deny, and we can vote on it if you'd like.
I don't think you can.
I think the best thing to do is go for a motion to postpone.
I tend to agree with Mr. Burnett.
Yes. Oh, we have a, we have a member missing.
We have a motion.
No.
I-
No.
I think what we ought to do is take another vote on this, and I'll make a motion to postpone. Is there a second?
I'll support that.
Is there a discussion? Call the vote.
Okay. M. Smith?
I'll vote for that, yes.
Tengary?
Sure.
Buckler?
Yes.
Kaplansky?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
And D. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to postpone has passed.
Now, I guess the thing is, what direction do we give? So, we need to give them some direction.
Oh, yes.
Do all the math.
West Young Man.
We own direction.
Well, I think the direction was, that you heard a couple of issues. One, there seems to be of the, the most heartburn seems to be with that center building. And the size and scale of the center building. And Mr. Richardson was correct when he said the financials of the developer are not our problem per se. They are a problem in the end because we do need a development that works and a developer who can make the project work. So, it's not purely in their court. We do have to take into consideration that it has to be a viable, you know, business plan, so that we don't end up with something like that thing up on Telegraph Road, North Pontiac there, North Square Lake there. so that we don't end up with something like that thing up on Telegraph Road, North Pontiac there, North Square Lake there. I'm not sure what that was, but it's kind of a gray ghost or the big whale sitting up there. As far as the, I quite frankly, we reserve, we've resolved the parking issue, it's adequate. We've resolved the issues with respect to the traffic. I mean, there's always going to be traffic, but I don't think that was anybody's number-one issue. I really think it's that center building. Is there anything else? I, I am sorry, that is, it is not, it has not been allowed as part of our process.
Application process and the vote is already in place. We're the applicant, you're now giving us.
But this is not the, but this.
You're now giving us some direction. I think we would have a right, even under Robert's Rules of Order, to address the planning of this for a moment, I mean.
We have to open it up to public comment as well at this point. We don't have a, we don't have an agenda item.
Yeah, if I may, Madam Chair, this item is slated to come back before the commission, the applicant could submit any number of correspondence between now and then for the, for the commission, for it to be discussed in open meeting.
That would be, that would be fine, because we don't have an agenda item on it. And I am a little bit new to this, but I have some.
Ms. Chairman.
I have some good guidance on my left here. So, because of the late hour, we have three agenda items left. One is liaison reports, which I will postpone until the next time and we can send them off as part of public record. I'm kind of hoping we have minimal commissioner and staff comments at this time, based on, but if we have anything that the commissioners would like to say, now is your chance.
You're doing liaison?
No, I'm gonna postpone it and we'll do it.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
We have a good crowd here tonight. I've been asking for a couple of months to get a determination on what's happening regarding drainage from one site to another. And if the city engineer is still here.
He is not.
He is.
Oh, yes, he was over there, sorry.
He moved up.
He moved.
Front and center, or front and end. Would you please? And you've heard the comments. I know it's late, but people are here, some are still here. There's been issues, and not just recently, it happens all the time. I had an incident on my property a couple of years ago. It wasn't resolved. But as a new neighbor comes in and changes the net, the course of water flow off of a property, now specifically south of the Harvard Square. And it relates to what, I brought it up earlier this morning. We're building a wall or the Los Let will potentially build a wall, should this all come true. Apparently, there's some discussion that it's affected some drainage in the properties to the south. Whether it has or not, I don't know. Maybe you folks know, maybe DPW knows, I don't know. What is the legal requirement or what, what happens when, in a situation like that?
Well, I think you'd have to figure out what is actually happening, right? So, I think your first step would be to acquire data, so that would be typically a topographic survey to see a couple of different things. One, was the new project built per plan, where the elevation's, you know, properly installed? Two, is there truly water or storm water that is actually backing up into these people's yards? So, you would probably want to extend your topographic survey to look into their backyard. So, that'd be the first step, is to just determine if there truly is an issue and to determine if the development was built per plan.
Well, let's, let me, let me go further. Let's assume that some properties were sheet draining onto the field.
To a vacant lot, yep.
Yeah, or vacant lot. And someone came along and built on that vacant lot and that changed the pattern or blocked the pattern.
Or their lot was encumbered by that drainage, so they could've.
But it changed the pattern. Who is, I don't wanna use the word responsible, but I guess that's the best word. Who's responsible?
That's a, that's a great question and, you know, it's a fairly legal question and I hate to pass the buck, but I'd have to do a little research on that. I could get back to you. It would, there's so many variables, it's difficult to say, is it homeowner's A.'s responsibility or the new homeowner's responsibility? But obviously, it's happened at Harvard Commons and it's something to be considered in future developments. So, maybe additional effort should be put forth during the engineering design review phase to require additional topographic surveys around the property to determine those paths, but I can't give a definitive answer.
Well, you're talking very engineering language there and maybe it is more of a legal issue. So, Mr. City Manager, I think, you know, I would like to know, 'cause it does happen. Could we, and I'm, thank you very much for your comment. Could we get the city attorney to write a letter or give us some or be here some evening? I really wanna know, because we do, as you know, and as a lot of people know, claims are made and some may be true. I don't know, some may not, I don't know. But we need to put this to a head and definitively say, what is the issue and who becomes responsible for that issue if and when it happens?
Certainly, this is a case we made to have the attorney here for a number of reasons at the next meeting, but make sure that's one of the items he's armed with.
Well said. Okay. Now, let me ask you another question since you're here.
Marty.
I know.
It is very.
We had rain, a nasty rain event three years ago. Is there anything Berkeley as a community could have done about it? Is there anything Berkeley as a community can do about it, should it happen again? Or is it, as I would suspect, a regional thing where the whole system was overburdened and that's just the breaks?
Well, that's a pretty in-depth question to ask at 11:26 in the evening, but.
Okay, well, let's take it up again.
I mean. It is a, it was a, a very, very unlikely uncommon storm that affected almost every community in southeast Michigan. Unfortunately, your city has storm drain exits to different W., different, different drain commissions that flow through Oakland County, through Macomb County. So, it really is a very complicated situation, but it, it is very difficult to stop an event like that from affecting a large number of residents.
And it's very difficult for a community of our size to accommodate it or do something about it.
It is.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry, Ms. Chairman.
That's okay, that's okay. So, any other comments?
I would just like to thank all the folks that came out tonight and participated. We have a lot of very good comments and we're gonna take it under advisement and see where we go.
Yep, I appreciate that. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.